Welcome to the May 19th, 2021, meeting of this Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We will call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum present. Still expecting one more to slide in here any minute. But we will begin with old business. Our first item of business is a street renaming, to rename an approximately two-mile-long segment of Mercury Boulevard, west of South Rutherford Boulevard, to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. City of Murfreesboro Planning Department is the applicant. Mr. Bromley.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission. The first item that we have on, I was fixing to say tonight's agenda, but this afternoon's agenda is an item of old business that was deferred at our May 5th Planning Commission meeting. It's the renaming of the segment of Mercury Boulevard that is in between Southeast Broad Street and South Rutherford Boulevard. It's the area in the green color on the map before you. We conducted a public hearing on the renaming of this segment of roadway from Mercury Boulevard to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard on May the 5th, and this item was deferred. What we bring to you today is the recommendation that instead of using the DR abbreviation for doctor would be to spell out doctor, as in D-O-C-T-O-R. And this would be similar to the situations that we have, like with St. Andrews Drive, St. Patrick Court, St. Bernard Way, which is where the new Salem Elementary School Zone is, where the abbreviation for Saint dovetails with the abbreviation for the word "street." And so, we spell out Saint in those instances. And so, we would recommend that you move forward with the renaming of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard with the official spelling out the word "doctor." I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. We had a lot of discussion about this the last time, so appreciate the getting us the information we need from 911. I think that was our biggest area of concern. And what other questions and comments do we have from the Planning Commission?
I think it's a good compromise. I think we're showing the respect to Dr. Martin Luther King, and we're hopefully avoiding the 911 conflict, and I'll make a motion that we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
If we could get, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Halliburton, just clarifying that your motion was the "doctor" spelled out.
That is correct.
Yes.
So, motion and a second, and we had a vote with one negative. Motion passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Bromley. Our second item of old business today is a zoning application for approximately 78 acres located along Medical Center Parkway, Robert Rose Drive, Wilkinson Pike, and Willow Oak Trail, to be rezoned from MU, GDO 1 and GDO 2, to PUD, CH, GDO 1 and GDO 2. This is Clary Park, and Hans Acquisitions LLC is the applicant. Screen.
Hi, thank you. At our last Planning Commission meeting on May the 5th, you held a public hearing to consider a zoning change request for property located along Wilkinson Pike, Willow Oak Trail, Robert Rose Drive, and Medical Center Parkway to be zoned PUD, Plan Unit District, and CH, Commercial Highway District. That evening, and I have some information up on my screen if you want to pull up the telestrator to the cable department that I want to share with the people here today.
Yeah, the cable department could switch laptops?
So, the project was recommended for approval, and there were some changes made during that recommendation, primarily that the ownership type of the Area 7 in the program book changed from apartment rentals to an ownership form, or some form of ownership, so either stacked flat condos, or single-family attached, or single-family detached. The second part of the change was that the density be reduced by 88 units. And so, I have on my computer screen two charts that I've prepared that give the number of units, the acres, and various information for the Clary Park development, and it shows you what they're proposing for you today. I did request that, because the motion to approve was made subject to a couple of conditions, that you, again, look at the program book before going to City Council. As it stands today, City Council will consider scheduling the item for a public hearing tomorrow, tomorrow night at 6:00 PM. But we wanted to get an idea from you, Planning Commission, if you were comfortable with the approach that they are proposing. So, they have, of course, suggested still having two types of plans, one where there's an option for the Area 7, and then the other is that the Area 7 would change from multifamily apartments to townhomes or single-family detached. In order to, I guess, make their project work, they are proposing to increase the number of apartment units in Area 5 by 20, so increasing Area 5 by 20 dwelling units, and then having the option for Area 7 to be townhomes. And so, that's a little different than what we discussed, however, I think it's within the spirit of the conversation. So, what I'd like for you today, and what the applicant would like, is for you to opine upon the request and see if it meets the spirit of your conditions of approval, and if so, tomorrow night, the City Council will schedule it for a public hearing. I will, of course, ensure that they, if this approach is acceptable to you, ensure that they revise the program book to include all the information. So ultimately, the Area 5 apartments go from 280 units to 300 units, and Area 7 decreases from 208 dwelling units to 100. So, there's a net decrease of 88 units, which is, I think, consistent with the message I heard a couple of weeks ago. We do have Kevin Gunther, Matt Taylor, and Walter Shea here this afternoon, representing their project. If you have any questions for them, or is there any additional information you have at this time? Mr. Taylor will come to the lectern, and then if you have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Matt Taylor from SEC. I think Ms. Green did a good job wrapping that up. It was Area 5 is at a total of 300 apartments for multifamily, and then Area 7 would continue with the same commitment for the office for the first three years, like we had originally proposed, and after that, a maximum of 100 townhomes in there for a single-family attached. And we have kept the same commitment that it, you know, not sell into a multifamily or a rental community.
Okay, and so, Mr. Taylor, these are the new plan book pages that we're looking at in front of us. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. And so, you should have an Option A, and an Option B that show the land use map, and then you should have the same thing showing the land use tables. So, you should have, I think it's a total of four sheets in front of you.
So, Margaret Ann, what we've got on our screen right now is not in this, right?
What's on the screen now is the table, the one in the middle is with the new information, and the one on the bottom is the information for the May 5th. And so, you can see the change. Acreages changed a little bit, and then the unit mix changed a little bit. And so, I just wanted you to have an opportunity to maybe easily compare those changes. And the acreage changes were just half an acre, I think, difference. Let's see if I have...
Acres.
Oh, yeah, the parking is what made the acreage change. So, when I published the agenda, I didn't have the color copy yet. There were a couple of black and white images. So, on the screen is a black and white image with the information. We also have the option with the office as well.
Couple of things to note. We still kept, in this area, still kept that ground floor retail or office that we had committed to previously. And where we basically extended this building to add those additional 20 units, and then we also moved the dog park to this location. It was originally roughly there. And so, we feel like overall, the plan is better. We got a better location for the dog park. We got a little more balance between those two front buildings that front on Clary, and we kept the same commitments to that ground floor office.
Now, raising the unit count back up, did we go back in commercial square footage? Since when we reduced footage before, we lost commercial footage.
So, the reduction previously, I think, had to do mainly, it was with the overall count, and so, it was such a small percentage, I don't think, it would not have made a big difference there, councilman. It was less than 10%, so you're talking a couple of hundred square feet, maybe.
I think it's within the spirit of the change that we were looking for, just my opinion. I'm sure there may be other opinions as part of this Planning Commission, but I won't make a motion at this point and give other people an opportunity to voice their opinion.
We know there's some other opinions up here. Anybody else like?
I like the 280 and the 120 better than the 300 and the 100.
I like it better, too. I'll tell you, though, I talked to Mr. Taylor about this a week or two ago, or whatever. I think I basically came to the point where I felt like Ken did, was it kind of just gets us to the spirit of where we were trying to get to. And frankly, you know, when that, if we look at those two areas together, trying to get kind of that total number down, we've gone from 890 units to 620. And as far as just straight up for rental properties, we've gone from 600 to 300. And, you know, I just felt like if 280, or, you know, would I prefer it being at 280? Yeah, I would. But then I felt like, from a compromise standpoint on my part, that I'd be okay with supporting it at this level. So, by the way, I apologize to everybody for showing up late. Had it on my calendar at 2:00 today. I'm gonna blame it on somebody else, but I don't know who yet.
I tried to say that at the last meeting when you said 2:00. I said 1:00, and then you said, no, 2:00. I said, okay.
I did. Then I'm gonna blame you.
Well, I asked some people, and they said, no, 1:00.
You knew I had it wrong. Friends and everything.
I know it. I feel terrible.
So, I am sorry.
Well, we're glad you're here.
Apologize.
Wouldn't want you to miss this conversation. We want to hear your opinion, so.
So, the display is for townhomes, but it would be the same number of flats, correct? If you did flats?
So, if we did flats, we would have to come back, because we'd have to show you that architecture and that exact layout. And frankly, you know, we don't have that design today, but if we were to do that, we would come back through the process and have a putt amendment and show you that architecture and that layout.
Okay.
But the townhouse architecture here will be consistent with what we've got everywhere else in the project.
By the way, I told Ronnie it was a 2. But I did text him to tell you. I was hoping we could get this in before he got here, but, yeah.
We almost got it in before you got here.
Which is what everybody else in the room was hoping.
Not really. Not really.
If there's any further comments, I make a motion that we approve, subject to all staff comments. No, second.
So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all very much. Appreciate everyone's hard work to get this through. All the compromise. Okay, that takes care of our old business. Next, we will move on to the consent agenda, and we have several items there. The first item, A, is Farmhouse Downs, Section 3, preliminary plat for 164 lots on 81.2 acres, zoned RSA 2, RS 6, and RM 16, located along Lyons Farm Parkway, south of John Bragg Highway. Grant Street Partners is the developer. Item B is the Gardens of Three Rivers, re-subdivision of Lot 1, final plat for four lots on 0.41 acres, zoned PRD, located along Elm Croft Avenue and Audubon Lane, Patterson Company LLC developer. Item C is the Gardens of Three Rivers, re-subdivision of Lot 15, final plat for three lots on 0.30 acres, zoned PRD, located along Lee Wood Court and Elm Croft Avenue, Harpeth Valley Homes LLC developer. Item D is the Gardens of Three Rivers, re-subdivision of Lot 18, final plat for three lots on 0.27 acres, zoned PRD, located along Lee Wood Court, Harpeth Valley Homes LLC is the developer. Item E is the Gardens of Three Rivers, re-subdivision of Lot 62, final plat for four lots on 0.40 acres, zoned PRD, located along Elm Croft Avenue, Patterson Company LLC is the developer. Item F is Kingdom Crest Commercial, Section 1, final plat for three lots on 6.83 acres, zoned CH, located along Franklin Road and Veterans Parkway, Swanson Development LP developer. Item G is Massey Property, third re-subdivision of Lot 2, final plat for one lot on 5.48 acres, zoned CF, located along Osborne Lane, Brennis E. Osop Jr. is the developer. Item H is Kingdom Ridge Commercial, Section 1, Lot 2, final plat for one lot on 0.99 acres, zoned CH, located along Franklin Road and Jason Flane, Swanson Development LP developer. Item I is the Reserve, re-subdivision of Section 8, Common Area, final plat for one lot in Common Area on 0.43 acres, zoned RS 12, located along Dallas Court and Caraway Drive, Salem Creek Partnership developer. Item J is Glenview Farms, Section 4, preliminary plat for 41 lots on 17.02 acres, zoned RS 12, located along Indian Park Drive, Glen Hutchinson developer. Item K is Shelton Square, Section 7, preliminary plat for 30 lots on 21.8 acres, zoned PRD, located along Maroon Drive, Shelton Square LLC developer. Item L is Bilbro Avenue, excuse me, Bilbro Addition Annex to Murfreesboro, re-subdivision of Block D, lots 16, 18, 20, 22, and 24, final plat consolidating five lots into one on 1.33 acres, zoned PRD, located at the northeast corner of South Bilbro Avenue and East State Street, WB Holdings developer. Item M, Beasley Road, re-subdivision of lots 6 and 7, final plat for one lot on 2.03 acres, zoned CH, located along Veterans Parkway, Overall Creek Partners developer. Item N is Gresham Lane subdivision, the re-subdivision of Glendale, Lot 57, preliminary plat for seven lots on 5.4 acres, zoned RS 15, located along Gresham Lane, southwest of John R. Rice Boulevard, Alcorn Properties LLC is the developer. Are there any items on the consent agenda that anyone in the Planning Commission, or staff, or audience, would like removed for further discussion? And if not, we're ready for a motion on the consent agenda.
Move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes on the consent agenda. Next, we have our Gateway Design Overlay Projects. Our first item is Robert Rose Village East, Lot 6, The Blake at Gateway. Initial design review of an 85,789 square foot assisted living facility, located on 4.1 acres, zoned MU and GDO 1 along Robert Rose Drive and Lothrick Way. The Blake at Gateway LLC is the developer. Ms. Green?
Thank you. Our first item under the Gateway portion of our agenda this afternoon is for you to consider initial design review for a new 90-unit assisted living facility located on 4.1 acres. It's a part of the Robert Rose Village East commercial subdivision. This commercial development consists of 10 lots, includes Krispy Kreme, Hyatt Place, Vintage Gateway Apartments, Pinnacle Bank, Racetrack, some self-storage, and commercial centers. So, hopefully, that will help orient you to the site, and you can see it on the screen. Adjacent to this property is the multifamily portion. Across the street is another multifamily development. To the north is the Lux Retail Site Plan that you just approved this year, and this lot does have two fronts. And so, they're coming before you today for initial design review, which, of course, the focus is on the architecture of the site. Upon initial conversations, we asked for them to ensure that they were addressing the street with their architecture and with their site layout. In the gateway, we do require four-sided architecture regardless, but also those elevations that face the street, especially those with a higher functioning classification, do have an importance to our community. So, they do have a front of the building facing Robert Rose Drive, which is a collector, and that does have a covered drop-off and some architectural detailing. To the north, they have similar architectural features, but they do have eight rooms that have doors to the exterior, and the architect will go through the design with you and the plan for these areas. I did flag that as a possible area of concern for the Planning Commission, if it weren't planned for or addressed well. And so, they have a plan that they'd like to share with you. This development also has two center courtyards. You can see them as the rectangle inside the bigger rectangle here. And those courtyards are actually well-conceived formal open space, and so, they do meet our minimum requirements for formal open space. Not only do they meet the standard, but I think they also meet the overall goal of having formal open space, especially where people live. It's areas that do have shade structures, additional landscaping beyond our minimum standards, water features, seating that is integrated into the design, not just park benches. So, I think that you'll be pleased with the formal open space as well. The proposed building is a two-story structure, and as I mentioned, it is licensed as an assisted care living facility with the State of Tennessee, so it does meet that definition. Our zoning ordinance does have some additional standards that have to be met for assisted care living facility, and the plan does demonstrate that those are being met. For example, a minimum of 2,000 square feet of lot area is required for each room, and they are providing that. And they, of course, have the, they meet or exceed our minimum number of required parking spaces. They asked them to shift their dumpster further from the adjacent community, and they were able to do that as well. The structure is about 44 feet tall, I mentioned, is oriented toward Robert Rose Drive. They do not have parking spaces between the two fronts of the structure and the two streets, which is important, but they do have an access drive so that any emergency vehicles or just general vehicles can circulate the site. There's no additional connection to Robert Rose Drive. They only have a connection to the street to the north, per the approved master plan. That was one of the elements that we had identified on the master plan. Their drive is lining up with the other drives as well. This, of course, is initial design review, so the primary focus of initial design review is the architecture, but I did want to give you a layout of the site itself so you can understand how it speaks to the street and the adjacent developments. The, of course, GDO requires four-sided architecture. They did add some variations in the roofline, a well-defined base and cap, and then broke up the elevations with cement board siding. The building is mostly brick with some stone base of building, and they also have added some solid wood brackets, headers and seals at lintels and doors, wooden louvered shutters. I think that the elevations can fall flat a little bit in what you're looking at. So, working through this process with the design team, they showed me their software and kind of some 3D images of the building. So, I asked them if they would share that with you so that you could better understand the intent and the design and the architectural detailing and provide feedback. So, at this time, I'm gonna ask the engineer to come up and introduce the project, and he's gonna introduce the architects who've worked on this project. Any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Otherwise, it will be staff's recommendation that you recommend approval of initial design review today.
My name is Kyle Hoyt with Hoyt Barini. I'm the civil engineer on the project. I'm the applicant. I'm here on behalf of Harrison Young and the Blake Ownership Group. This is the sixth or seventh Blake that I'm, I've been a part of. We're really proud of these projects. We try to put a high-quality product forward. We appreciate all of Margaret Ann's work through the process. We've been really trying to work with her in collaboration to bring you guys something that Murfreesboro can also be proud of. We have Eric, the architect, here in attendance, and I think I'll hand it over to him, and he can run through the building design and shed some additional light.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Yeah, and I will, thanks for y'all's time. One thing that Kyle did mention is the high quality, the Blake itself is a high-quality establishment. They have, they have a lot of amenity to their, to their facilities, and so, I just wanted to show you guys and ladies a peek at what the, the architecture will look like. This is a brief, kind of fly around the building. We're on Robert Rose Drive at the very beginning of this, and now we're sort of turning the corner, Lothrick Way. So, that gives you an idea of, of the architecture. As mentioned, there are patios behind the shrubs right there on that ground level. And what I'll do is go all the way around, and then I'll have images that we can kind of stop on, if you have questions. This is the main parking, sort of at the back of the building. But as was mentioned, there's not truly a back of the building. It, it all is well-elevated, and we try to keep the design consistent around the whole property. The, a part of the quality and sort of the vision of the Blake is always one of, you want a high-quality place that people will feel proud to live there, something that is welcoming. Wait one second. You know, something that is welcoming and a, one of the architecture cues that we took early on was to have this place feel like it is almost resort-like. You know, you feel like you come home to it, but the architecture itself is of a European manor-like, like a manor home that you would find in a, to be very high-quality. So, as was mentioned, a lot of the materials on here, primarily, we have a brick that is painted, kind of a white, creamy white color, and then a variation of hardy board colors. And then the blue that you see here, that's the shutters. And then we also have the cast stone base that was added. And let's see, let me pause this for a second. That can take us to some still shots. This may be a little more clear as far as being able to see some of the detail. Once again, that's the corner of the building, and we're standing on Robert Rose Drive. Can come a straight shot of the building. This is a little bit closer in. You're able to see a little bit of the detail. There's also some heavy timber detail that is under the portico, and a lot of brick arches. There's a great deal of brick detail along the, along the windows. We have arched windows. This is the view again on Lothrick Way. We did, we did add some Tudor-style detail to this project, and you'll see, if I'm able to kind of point to it here. You'll see in the, in the area that is kind of in between the brick, in order to break up the massing, because it is a massive building, and we want to provide something that doesn't seem overwhelming. So, in several locations around the building, we did take that into account and add kind of a secondary texture to the building. Also, in doing that, we added downspouts, and even as the downspouts come down the brick, the brick is also recessed around that to help break it up, create some more shadow lines, so that it doesn't seem at all like just a flat brick building. And then also, as mentioned, shutters. We have large shutters, a full-size.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. All right. Item B is the Jackson Motel Site Plan Review of Parking Lot Modifications to an Existing Extended Stay Motel Located on 1.4 Acres, Zone CH and GDO 4, Located at 831 Northwest Broad Street. Developer, PLLC. Developer, is my guess. Ms. Green?
Thank you. Yeah, that was an odd name for me to write a couple times, but if you knew Sonny Patel, that's his company name, so that's who the applicant is today.
DevP?
Yeah.
Okay.
DevP LLC is the name of our company.
LLC. All right. Thank you.
I think that we probably are all familiar with this site. It's the Jackson Motel that's located, it's addressed off of Northwest Broad Street, but it is located on the corner of West College Street, Medical Center Parkway and Northwest Broad Street. The owner has, owns what I think this is defined as an extended stay motel, and we do have a definition of extended stay motel in our zoning ordinance. They've been working on some, I think, building codes mandated improvements to the building, and I think while doing that work, the owner wanted to make some modifications to the site plan. A portion of this property is located in the Gateway Design Overlay District, and that's the portion that has frontage along Broad Street. I have a little tiny map at the bottom of the screen, and that heavy line shows you the boundary of the gateway, the GDO 4, which is probably the GDO we work in the least. And so they are proposing some site plan changes and have submitted two site plans, one for Phase 1 and one for Phase 2 that he proposes to commence in six months. So my request was just to have all the information available today so we can consider it at one time. The plans did not meet some of our standards, and so with approvals today, I would ask that you make them subject to all staff comments, and we can make sure that some of those standards that we do require developments to be, to meet, be incorporated to the site, and I think that they can do that. It's just a matter of making sure they do it, and of course, we'll, we'll do that. So there are some additional parking spaces that they're proposing, and this is the Phase 1 plan. It shows they're keeping or adding the five-foot landscaping along the sidewalk that exists in front of the motel and irrigation as well. And then Phase 2 is for the addition of these spaces, and that's where, in this location, these spaces don't have the separation that's required in the gateway, so we will require them to revise the plan to have that separation there. It's a, it's a fairly simple site plan, but it is in the gateway, which requires planning commission review and approval. If you have any questions in the project, I'll be glad to answer them. And again, if you do recommend, or if you do decide to approve the project, we ask that you do it subject to all staff comments.
So I have a question. When you say this developed as part of meeting some codes requirements, at least that's what I thought I heard you say, does it have to do with the renovation of where a portion of this building caught on fire?
Yes.
Because it's been boarded up for months, so...
It has been boarded up for months, and they haven't really done a lot about it very quickly, until I think codes, building codes got involved and said, hey, this is a substandard situation that needs to be fixed. So while working on that, they also wanted to make changes to the site. It is something that needs to be addressed sooner, but that is, that is the impetus.
So is there, well, I'll be quiet.
I'll just ask, so are you, you've gotten, I guess, the maximum that we can get out of this? You know, I think just in general, not just with this property, but any property along Broad Street that comes up for any potential redevelopment opportunities, I think we've been, you know, actively trying to make improvements wherever we can, because I think our, you know, if you come in off 840 and come to Murfreesboro down that way through Broad Street, I think you get a very different picture than you do if you come off on Medical Center Parkway. And I think every opportunity we get to make improvements coming down Broad Street, we need to make sure that we're doing what we can to, to improve that as, as the opportunities present themselves. So I guess we're doing what we can here, and that's...
I definitely agree with you.
...the most we can ask for at this point. Is that right?
Well, of course, I can always ask for more. I did ask him to consider buying the checkers, demolishing both sites and build something awesome. This is a gateway into our city. It is a place, the location can't be duplicated. I do have the stories about Jackson Motel when it was an awesome place to be, when they did have a pool, and they had outdoor bocce ball, and they had like the only restaurant, I think, that served alcohol at first.
Only place to go for lunch.
The only place to go for lunch.
After church on Sunday, so...
And things have changed, and I mean, even just looking at today's agenda, the project just before this one and this one, there's a stark contrast. What they're doing is optional. It's, as far as the site work, the building has to like be safe. I certainly asked the question because I think it's important, consider redeveloping this. It's definitely not like contributing to the area, and I asked, but it wasn't...
Well, it will be an awesome opportunity in the future, but...
It still is an opportunity, yeah, and I don't think this, the investment they're doing here is pretty minimal. It's not like this investment's going to make any redevelopment not feasible in the future. I know sometimes we struggle with like allowing people to reinvest in projects that are really underperforming and don't contribute to our community. We struggle with allowing that because we don't want to reinvest in things that are really taking away from our community. And you know, Jackson Motel does have some of its, I think we all understand what it is today. The parking lot modifications aren't so much, so much of an investment that they're not, that they're going to keep it from being redeveloped in the future. I think the owner just has no desire to, to do anything at this time.
Are you going with, are the rooms going to be fixed before the parking?
Well, yeah, I, you know, I just like the chicken or the egg here. Do we have any hammer to, to cause them to get this thing fixed? Because it's been sitting there like that for, for a long time.
I'll ask Mr. Huddleston if he knows of any hammers to get, to actually get them to finish the project, since he's over building codes and planning and probably has a better understanding of how those work. I, I don't want to pretend to know, like understand codes.
Hello, Mr. Huddleston.
Good afternoon, Chair Jones. Members of the Plan Commission, our Building Codes Department uses property maintenance and substandards, structure codes violation process, and we inspect buildings after fire damage and conduct a substandard inspection, send a notice to the owner, and we can use the mechanisms available to us in that program for enforcement, including citing them to City Court for failure to repair, upgrade, anything to a standard condition.
So what's the timeframe for something like that?
Well, the timeframe, if there's a failure to act, if there's, if people are working and pursuing, we're going to consider that as an effort toward compliance. If there's a failure to act or complete, we, we generally operate on a mandatory notice requirement, and then we give them a time to make a response to that. That usually runs about 30 to 60 days, depending on how much notice, previous notice we've given them, before there's a citation issued to, to appear at court.
So when's the last time we notified them?
I'm not sure on that particular issue, but I can check and get you guys a report back.
Thank you.
So there are just not any, as far as like landscape opportunities out on the Medical Center Parkway side?
They're, they are adding with the second phase, and of course, I think they're maybe, they desired not to add these, but we did push back and, and, let me zoom into the landscaping. So areas of change, we can make them meet our standard areas that exist, can exist unless the changes exceed 50%. So if they were doing a 50% increase in the parking, we can make the whole site come up to compliance. Practically, it's kind of hard, but the zoning ordinance gives us that authority. And so what we, what some of the things we've done is we are requiring them to, this existing concrete sidewalk is under a canopy, so it's covered. On the opposite side of that, install a five-foot base of building landscaping and irrigate the area, because there's no sense in installing landscaping and letting it die. Of course, we have our standard bond procedures, so we are getting that landscaping. And then the installation of some landscape islands that don't exist now, because we do require parking spaces to be broken up, I think, every 12 feet. Here at the entrance to Medical Center Parkway, they wanted to widen that entrance, but our public infrastructure department pushed back and didn't like the, the entrance being wider, especially near a signalized intersection, and so we, they're keeping the width there the same, and then doing some seasonal color at the entrance, which is something, it's not a lot. One of the things that we'll need them to do is to connect to the existing sidewalk here. You can see the covered sidewalk ends into what I understand is a load-bearing wall, so that sidewalk connection will need to happen at some point to the public sidewalk. So we've tried to, where we can, think that we can get, and we're open to, of course, ideas where we think we can get some, some things to soften the building or add some improvements. We've asked for those, and that's what's in Phase 2. Most of this isn't in Phase 1. But some of these spaces will likely need to either be reoriented or removed, because we do require 15 feet between that parking and the adjacent property line. So there'll be additional green space here.
Okay.
So with the additional parking requests, is it still meeting the green space requirement?
So I've asked for them to give me that 20% open space, which is what the gateway and other, other areas require. I haven't gotten those calculations yet. I suspect they'll probably meet them. I don't see anything that tells me they won't have 20%, but if they don't, then we'll have to have them decrease the pavement area or decrease the number of spaces to maintain at least 20% open space. We, there will be a subdivision plat that you'll consider next month, because we noticed that there was a plat separating this into two separate lots, but there was a physical connection made between the buildings, and that appears to be a code violation. So by combining the two lots into one, they can remedy that. So there will be a final plat at next month's meeting. They did submit that for our consideration. And so this property actually has a finger that goes to Northwest Broad Street that you don't see on these plans.
And losing the two parking spaces, or how many ever does, they still meet parking requirements?
Well, so I think they probably don't meet them now, but adding some gets them closer. It's an existing site that predates our current parking regulations, and they just feel they want to add additional spaces, and so that's why they're doing the parking. They don't have to do this parking to upgrade the building. They can fix the building with or without it. I think he just thinks since he's got equipment there, he wants to do it at this time. This is an optional project. It's not something that we're...
I think the spirit though would be to push them to add as much landscaping, as much as possible, so that we can have a better look.
I definitely asked for some landscaping, and I don't know, Mr. Huddleston, if there are opportunities to add more landscaping that you've identified.
What else is in Phase 2 besides the landscaping that you pointed out?
Sure. So this is, I don't know if you can see the little change in this area? This is all that's Phase 2.
That parking is Phase 2?
This is how it exists, and this is Phase 2.
So it's at that point that the landscaping is added?
Yeah.
So I'm sorry, then I thought that was Phase 1. What's Phase 1?
Phase 1 is, oh, sorry. I'm not as sophisticated as I think I am, apparently. Computer savvy, whatever. So Phase 1 demolition plan, and then Phase 1 is this. So we can, let's look at the landscaping.
I don't understand.
It looks like the landscaping isn't phased. It's just a landscape plan.
That would be better.
All, this isn't Phase 1 and this 2 here?
I'm not sure about the front, but I would be more than building.
So we can say the front and along the building would be Phase 1, and then these landscape islands and perimeter would be Phase 3 or 2, I mean?
That would be better.
Yeah. I like that.
I think personally for me, I'd rather see the building fixed before any of this was done.
Well, I would guess that's what they're talking about in Phase 1, right? Fixing the building and doing the landscaping along the building?
No, I'm talking about the rooms that he was talking, the ones that are fire damaged.
Right.
No.
That's not part of Phase 1?
That's what Mr. Huddleston referenced, as long as they're proactively working to fix it, it's considered a project underway, but not a true phased piece of this project.
Right.
Okay. And so by approving, it's, you know, it's about dollars, right? There's, they get the approval, they can put that dollar, that budget toward parking rather than building, which seems like it might postpone...
Building.
...progress on the improvements to the building.
So this work would generally be authorized with the cost of construction site work permit? I don't know, let me get Mr. Ives and put him on the spot, if there's a way to do a condition of the permit that the building be finished, or is that reasonable, or is, with the completion of, of this site work, or prior to the site work?
I know that this building was damaged. I'm not familiar with the efforts that have been put forth so far to have it remedied, so I wouldn't want to jump into that without some further research. Still supplemental information, our building codes directors, they are working, already have the project in an enforcement action at City Court, and that there are building directors understanding that they have started some of the building repairs in response to that. And so that building repair work will be conducted under the, you know, under the substandard construction or fire repair order. Don't know if that helps you or hurts you, but that's what the status of the building repair is.
Kind of the chicken or the egg. I mean, it doesn't sound like we have a, a pressure point other than what you've said, what you've already outlined with respects to getting the work done, so, Mr. Wright, I understand what you're saying, but at the same time, I don't want to hinder them from making any improvements to this property if they're willing to do it. You know, so I'm, I'm inclined to approving it, even, you know, at least you've got landscaping in front of this thing, even if it's boarded up. I mean, I don't, I don't know what's better here. You know what I'm trying to say? I, I think that what they're trying to do at least improves it, and it doesn't sound like we have any other remedies besides what Sam outlined with respects to getting the work done, but, because if we don't approve it, then he's not going to do it.
And I do definitely think, you know, I'm pleased to see even the, the application and the willingness to, you know, if they can get the extra parking spaces to put in the landscaping that, that, you know, we've asked for, and I, I don't know if there's a way to say, you, you know, that Phase 2 parking can go in after all the landscaping is complete, because I don't think you'd want to do all that landscaping until you'd finished working on the building. But anyway, I agree with Mr. Halliburton that, you know, we're happy to see any improvements and appreciate the opportunity to even, even see the site plan.
Just one question that comes up, Margaret Ann, you probably know this best, is just to make sure if there, any changes that we're approving here, does that impact, so I agree with what Ken's saying as far as, you know, any improvement. I'm, I'm for it, and seems in my brain, I can't figure out a why, a reason why they would make these improvements without fixing the rooms. Maybe there is some that, that could occur, but is there anything that we're doing here that would impact our capability or the, just impact the situation of improving this further down the line? I guess, so in my brain, you know, start thinking about the, the idea of a 50% improve or increase in the, in the parking spaces, that that would trigger then a more substantive change.[1739.65] and appreciate the opportunity to even see the site plan.
Just one question that comes up, Margaret Ann, you probably know this best, is just to make sure if there, any changes that we're approving here, does that impact? So I agree with what Ken's saying as far as, you know, any improvement. I'm for it, and seems in my brain, I can't figure out a reason why they would make these improvements without fixing the rooms. Maybe there is some that could occur, but is there anything that we're doing here that would impact our capability or just impact the situation of improving this further down the line? I guess, so in my brain, you know, start thinking about the idea of a 50% improve or increase in the parking spaces, that that would trigger then a more substantive change? Did I hear that correct?
That's right, yes.
So if they add parking spaces this time, is it 50% on top of this new number? And so we've kind of prolonged or compounded the issue?
It is on top of this number. I don't remember exactly the time, but usually it's within three years. So like if you've done those improvements and if they wait five years, then it would start over. It would include this and the next amount of spaces. I think that, I mean, I think the fact that they're doing these parking lot improvements means he has no desire to change the use or building or anything. I don't think the improvements would be an impediment to redevelopment because they're not significant enough. They're not large enough for investment that it wouldn't financially make sense. But you can incrementally, every few years, and we've had that another side on the old hunt pool and spa, there's parking in the back. They did a parking lot, they waited so many years, and they did another parking lot. And so the time starts, or the 50% is bigger than like what you're saying.
I don't mean to keep talking about this, but I'm next to this a lot. And so I'm of the opinion, any improvement, so I think also what I've heard you say is they don't have to do this.
Right, this isn't...
Yeah, this is, there's no mandate that they're doing this at all. And so if we don't at least approve this, we have no improvements. You know, I just...
Well, let me ask one more question then. So with this site, we don't know if the number of parking spaces has to be reduced, but the question would be, I guess, for you to ask them if we can maximize the parking spaces because if you have a place that's under park, that's a motel like this, who are you going to attract? Is the people that don't have cars. So if we increase the parking, you could at least attract a better clientele.
How many spaces are they increasing by? I'm sorry, I just can't read it.
Bill, do you remember?
I don't. We're increasing as much as we can.
Okay, so you're already, you think you're already at that maximum?
I don't need any more places for the park.
Okay, all right, that answers my question.
Do they share with you why? Is the purpose for increasing parking to get more occupants, therefore make more money, therefore have more money to improve the building? That's where my mind goes.
So when he, when Sonny first reached out to me, he told me his goal was he wanted to get rid of any green space between the sidewalk and the parking spaces. That's what he said he wanted to do. And I said that he couldn't do that because you still had to have a five-foot landscaping, and then on top of that, he needs to irrigate it, and I think he pushed back about wanting to irrigate. So the only stated goal that he gave me is he wanted to get rid of most of the green space that he could and just put parking in. He hasn't told me that he, like, his business model isn't changing at all.
I found on the site data table, there are 18 existing spaces and a total of 28 parking spaces with this project. Increase of 10.
Increase of 10, which we're asking them to probably take away two, so it'll be an increase of eight, maybe.
I think it's a net increase of...
Oh. What she's saying is a couple of spaces don't have the minimum separation, so that'll go away anyway.
We got to pay the whole lot, too.
I agree that any improvement is a good improvement. I'd like to hope that we could at a minimum get the landscaping off of the main road included in Phase One, but I still just question if, it's a small project, but it's still a significant amount of money, given the building and its state of, and its condition, and that money could be applied to getting rid of plywood or repairing fire damages, only if they're...
Yeah, it's not going to make you look past all the plywood.
Right.
I'm going to make a motion to defer this until the building's complete.
Does anybody in, know what the plans are for the building?
Good afternoon, Chairman Jones, Chairwoman Jones, and members of the commission. I'm Bill Huddleston with Huddleston Steel Engineering. Mr. Patel was here today, and he was here to answer any questions, and while we were sitting there, he got a text from his wife that they were putting his son in the hospital, so he had to leave. My understanding from him is he's just trying to get more parking for the hotel. And in so doing, Margaret Ann has rightfully so made sure that he's following all the requirements of the Gateway District, and as a result of that, we're putting in a significant amount of landscaping. I think it's fine to go ahead and make the side along the existing building and the frontage part of Phase One landscaping. I don't see a problem with that. I'd be happy to answer any other questions that I can. I'm not familiar with the fire situation or the code situation, but it's my understanding that's a separate path that's being pursued and is getting addressed.
Mr. Wright and members of the planning commission and Mr. Ives may want to chime in on this. According to the zoning ordinance, the commission shall approve, conditionally approve, conditionally disapprove pending submission of additional information, or disapprove with stated reasons a site plan application within 65 days of the date that the application for the plan review was filed with the planning director. So I would think that deferring it to an indefinite date of when the structure is repaired probably would not fall within the prescribed time of our zoning ordinance. Mr. Ives may want to...
I would agree with that. But we can make it conditional.
Yeah, we can make it conditional, approval of the building being completed.
Yeah, I think you could approve subject to that, but you couldn't, I think the motion was to defer until...
I'll change my motion then. I motion to approve the law staff comments conditionally on the completion of the building.
So by then, we would have approved it. They just got to fix the building in addition to doing the other stuff.
Would that be, would the condition be that they would not get a permit until the building is, a permit for the site work until the building is completed, or that they don't get their...
I guess that's up to Mr. Wright, but I would think that would be an appropriate condition, that it's approved, conditioned on no permit until the building repairs are completed.
That's right.
Thank you.
Isn't that a, it's a broad statement, though, isn't it? Until the building is done? What does that mean?
The fire damage is repaired.
Okay.
Perhaps to the satisfaction of the building and codes department.
Well, building codes would issue a C of O, I would expect, on, for that unit or whatever units are involved on the completion of the repairs.
Yeah, exactly.
The only way that this hinders them making the improvements is if they were not planning to fix the rooms, which is not a good answer either. Right? I mean, so, I don't think...
Yeah, that, you know, I'm the one that brought up the whole fixing of the rooms, but...
I was going there anyway.
Yeah. But guys, I'm leaning a different direction here.
I really want to see the landscaping.
And then he, and not do anything. There's no mandatory, there's nothing making him do this. I'd rather at least approve it and hopefully he does it. That's just, but I get it. I get it. That was the direction I was going in the first place, but I think we're at a point that anything is an improvement.
And that's what I was going to ask, was if you did all this conditional approval, I mean, can you still say the Phase One landscaping plan can go ahead and be done if then he doesn't get the permit for the parking space additions until the rooms are completed?
I'm okay with that.
Because we want to see that landscaping.
Well, we've got to create the space to put the landscaping in, and so we got to...
I just want to see the, you know, I'm talking about the Phase One landscaping on the Medical Center Parkway and in front of the building. Is this building that we're talking about, the, and I don't know which units were damaged in the fire, are they in that?
Yes.
Same building on the back, right in there?
Closest to the Medical Center. First looking forward. But we've got to construct the parking lot in order to create the space to put the landscaping in.
But not the additional parking lot, the additional parking spaces that we're asking for, is that right?
Well, the additional, the parking spaces exist now at an angle.
Parking lot in half.
And we've got to construct the landscaping bed with the parking lot for Phase One to create the space to put the landscaping.
Yeah, I get it. I get it. Once you start tearing up his parking lot on the front, he needs somewhere to park on the back so that he can still conduct business.
I'm for anything to see it through. That's what I'm for. However, we come up with the motion.
Yeah.
So I believe we have a motion?
Yeah, so I...
I don't...
Can we restate the motion?
Yeah, but before, since we've got a second yet, let me mention one thing. So make sure we're thinking about this addition of parking spaces, and I hear what you're saying about it, and I'm probably right. I'm just trying to, this is, this is kind of, I don't know which way my head's leading me on this, but, you know, the additional parking spaces seems like that is an issue. I mean, is there any permit in the parking space? I don't know. The thing about adding more parking spaces, obviously what he's wanting to do is have more parking spaces for not even the green space to be there, that many more parking spaces. So, I mean, he wants that to be there, but he's also limited that if he adds, if he's, did you say he's going from 28 to 38?
18 to 28.
28. Wouldn't that be more than 50% increase?
I think that is between the two phases.
Well, that'd be within three years. If it's going from 18 to 28, it's beyond the 50%. So he would have to change everything. What do you...
I was thinking it was area, like square feet. If it's expanded by 50%, meaning like the impervious area is increased by 50%, then...
Okay. And even if it's by spaces, if they lose those two spaces, then they've gone below 50%?
Probably that space is creeping up to just under 50%.
It's creeping up. Yeah, 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 you're close.
If it's not, I mean, I'm probably a little more worried about that because that might lead to another one of these discussions three years and a day from now of where we're trying to do more without making real improvements to ultimately what redevelopment. But, I mean, I get it both ways on this. I mean, I'm with you to get any kind of improvement we can get. I'm also with it that I certainly would love to see the improvements made to the fire damage. I'll be hon, I mean, I think, Sean, where I'm kind of going on this is thinking that, you know, we may just have to make sure we are persistent with our codes department and press it from that angle as much as we can and just make sure, I mean, look, Mr. Huddleston, I think we just ask you to, first of all, say, well, his son's okay, or his child, and secondly, beyond that, to say that we expect that work to get done. I mean, you know, it's, yeah, and that's going to be something that we're going to be leaning on, and everybody's going to notice and all that. So I think I'll probably go along the lines of approving this and hope to get some improvement and turn it over to codes and make sure we're persistent on that, and then anything that we can get done beyond that in future, we get it done. As long as you don't see some way, I mean, look, I'm asking you and putting you on the spot here a little bit, and I do it under the lights, but to make sure, I just want to make sure you don't see any way we're kind of cutting off our nose in spite of our face for future potential improvements that might be more substantive. Anything that we're doing here today that would...
I was born for the spotlight, so I'm happy.
I always knew that, but...
It's okay. It doesn't matter. I, I mean, I certainly have the hesitation you have, and to kind of veer away from your actual question and kind of go into a theoretical one as far as planning. You know, our community wrestles with the location of multifamily. A lot of communities use it as an incentive for areas that need redevelopment. So we're not doing new apartments on these highways, but we see an area where it really isn't performing its best, and so we'll withhold this entitlement for a high-value land use to do like a mixed use. So it may be there are areas of our community that are older that are corridors that in the future, planning for the city council may say that might want that carrot of multifamily to encourage redevelopment here, and so when I see other communities and what they do with apartments, they kind of reserve them for that scenario. And I know Mrs. Rush and I have talked about that, and are there areas where you would want to do that? Not that I'm saying apartments should go here, but sometimes that's what planners use as an incentive to increase the density so that you can convince somebody who basically has a cash check cow to like reinvest in the property. I don't think this parking lot is enough to make it stay. I think that the owner already, is already probably doing pretty well with it. The parking lot is a matter of convenience. I've wrestled with it because, of course, you know, I would love to see redevelopment here, especially on this corner. It's so important, it's so significant. When I asked him to redevelop it, he said he didn't have the money, but of course, a developer told us there's no limit to what you can do with borrowed money. I don't see anything glaring to me that says, no. Mr. Blomley, you see anything?
No, nor do I. I don't...
Can we have the motion stated? I don't think we have a motion anymore. Can we have a motion stated, please?
You can also, if you have questions, you can defer it till the next meeting and have them come back and answer those questions. Or you can conditionally approve it, conditionally disapprove, or just not be okay with the plan. So if there were questions that you really wanted to answer before making your decision, you can defer it until the next meeting?
Will that not put us in a time crunch on our, I don't have those dates in front of me.
I think we'd have, I think we'd have the leeway to do one more meeting.
Two weeks would be, two, two and a half weeks would be okay?
Yeah, the submittal was on April the 15th, so right now, we're at about 35 day, 34, 35 days, so it could probably go to June 16th even if need be.
And I don't know, I labeled this as site plan review and not initial design review, even though it's in the gateway. I don't know if I mislabeled it as site plan review. I should have done initial, that would have given you an extra month anyway. I could have made that mistake.
I doubt it.
I would love for the applicant to be here.
Would you want to consider this at our next night meeting?
I would, yes.
Or wait till the next day meeting?
Whatever it was within the...
If it works for the next day meeting, that would be preferable, I think.
If my math serves me correct, that they turned in on April the 15th and June 16th should be within 65 days if I'm not mistaken, so I think that that would be appropriate.
Someone check that Auburn math.
The ordinance requires 65 days, right? Within 65?
Yeah, maximum 65 days.
Doing a night meeting, we could knock it out pretty, I mean, I think at this point, we could knock this thing out pretty fast. We know what's in front of us. I mean, that will get it done sooner for the applicant, right? I mean, is there any reason we can't do it at the night meeting, which would be sooner? Is there any reason why we couldn't do it at the next night meeting, which would be sooner than that?
No, with the possible exception of the length of the agenda, and I don't know what that is.
We'll have six public hearings on, six public hearings.
Say, well, it's going to wait till June.
Yeah, I hate to put...
We want him to do the work, so I don't think we want to take the guy off and say, wait till June, and we'll make a decision then. So if we can do it at the night meeting, let's do it at the night meeting.
I'm good with it. Yeah.
Yeah, y'all certainly can schedule for that.
Okay.
I was just giving you options.
Yep.
Either way, that's all.
And just, you know, we're all saying that at the night meeting, and that is all assuming what we want is for the applicant to be here, and I guess we have to know whether the applicant can be here. Do you think so?
If...
Whole business, too, so it'll be on the first day agenda, hopefully.
And perhaps that would be subject to Mr. Huddleston being able to confirm that his client would be there, and if his client would not be available that night on June the 2nd, perhaps then June 16th would be appropriate.
All right. Everybody's kind of in their head. I'll make the motion that we defer till June 2nd contingent on the applicant being able to be here, and in which case we may defer it till the 16th, if that's the date that he can be here, is the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Next item, Fortress Square, final plat for two lots on 5.8 acres, zoned CH and GDO1, located along Fortress Boulevard and John R. Rice Boulevard. Betty Properties, Properties LLC, Inc. is the developer. Ms. Green?
Thank you. This final item under the Gateway portion of your agenda is for you to consider approval of a final plat that creates two lots. The property is located along Fortress Boulevard and John R. Rice, and you can see it on the map before you. It is partially developed with, I think, what was called the L-shaped building, but it's the Fortress Square site plan, initial design review, final design review in 2017. It has subsequently been constructed according to that site plan. The plat is now to subdivide this property into two lots, and you can see on the image I have on the screen before you that proposed layout. When I... you that proposed layout. When I received this plat, I noticed that the proposed property line here was proposed in an area that did not appear to meet some of our minimum separation standards. The Gateway Design Overlay District requires a separation of 15 feet between drive, access, and parking and adjacent property lines. And then, we've bumped up against that with other areas. That standard has truly helped develop the gateway how it is. But, we've noticed that it didn't meet that standard there, and there was the perimeter planting yard that was missing. So, I reached out to the engineer, Mr. Taylor, to ask him to look at that layout because it was a bit unusual. Other than that lot line, which I'll discuss in just a minute, the plat is in good order. It is staff's opinion that we cannot allow that property line to be proposed there because it would then not meet the minimum standards in our zoning ordinance. And so, the remedy would be either to move the property line or for the applicant to request a variance. Mr. Taylor will be coming up in just a moment, but I think he's gonna pass out the exhibits that he has. He would like to ask for a variance. And for projects in the gateway that are asking for a variance from gateway standards, they are required to go to Planning Commission first and get your feedback prior to going to BZA. And so, Mr. Taylor prepared a memo and some exhibits as to some of the criteria why he believes that this is a good candidate for a variance. I think most significantly is that that driveway location was mandated by the Cedar, Cedar Glade Street across the way and that it's much wider than we would generally see for driveways. And I think that's because there was a signalized intersection there. But, I'd like Mr. Taylor to go through his requests regarding a variance to that standard to the 15-foot separation for Lot 1 and a request for the standard of an eight-foot perimeter planting yard for Lot 1. The future Lot 2 will develop to meet standards. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Matt Taylor from SEC. So, what you got before you is a draft letter as well as the master plan that we had submitted with the original site plan, as well as the site plan itself that was approved and built on, and the landscape plan. And so, essentially, we're just asking for that perimeter yard along the southern property line where the shared access drive is, and that any plantings required there would come along with the development of the lot to the south of the existing building. So, you can see we've been very consistent with where we've shown that property line. The property line in the drive aisle is actually consistent with several other locations in the gateway where we've done something similar. The racetrack, the Thorntons, some of the water stone lots have the alley in the back where the property line actually goes to the center. And then, actually, the Walmart directly across the street has the exact same setup where the property line goes to the middle when it's a shared access. And so, again, if we were to move this property line to the south, it would make the development of the remaining land to the south near impossible, if not impossible, for anything substantial there because we'd be left with about a 75-foot wide strip. And, you know, that drive was dictated by the location of the roadway across the street. So, we had to line up with that. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So, when you do that, I should know the answer to this question, but when you have the property line in the middle of the street, any issues with respects to who maintains what? Or are you just saying the-
We actually will have an owners' association, and we typically, I don't know how this particular one is assigned, but typically, we do that by acreage. So, for instance, Lot 1 is two acres and Lot 2 is five acres. And so, there'd be, what does that work out, a 30, 70 split, something like that? Mr. Huddles, two sevens. So, do you remember fractions? Because I have tried to forget them. We do, I think it is worth noting, we do meet all the other landscape requirements for Lot 1, the open space, formal open space, number of trees, all that on site.
And the Planning Commission's feedback on this matter is valuable because it will, Board of Zoning Appeals will consider this, and we will take the Planning Commission's recommendation, if you do choose to recommend this, to the Board of Zoning Appeals. It's kind of an endorsement of the variance request. Of course, ultimately, the Board of Zoning Appeals will make the determination of whether or not to approve the variances that Mr. Taylor has outlined.
So, can I just make sure I understand? So, what we're looking at on the screen is Lot 1 and Lot 2?
Yes, ma'am.
And it, what we see on the master plan, we had 2A and 2B.
Yeah, we had shown two lots up there, but right now, we have a potential buyer for Lot 2 in its entirety. And so-
So, it really is more of a flag-type lot, basically, the way it looks?
L-shaped, yeah. I'm not sure what they want to do up along Fortress. They've not shared any sort of site plan necessarily with us, but they have expressed an interest in purchasing the rest of this. And as you can see, Lot 2, we'd set that up with the intention of the property line being in the drive aisle and the landscaping being to the south. And we know that, you know, anything that's going to the south there is gonna be challenged. It's gonna have to be a skinny building. So, we already know that. We just didn't want to make it even harder by moving the property line.
So, in our, in this, it's actually one, it's 2A, 2B, and 3, isn't it?
On the master plan, yes, sir. And so, really, what we've done is combined Lot 2B and 3 from the master plan.
Now, 2B and 3 are just Lot 2, like we see on our screen.
Now, it looks like Lot 2 is, used to be 3 and 2B.
So, on your final plat, what is shown right now is Lot 2. It used to be Lot 2B and 3 is what we-
I got you, I got you.
So, originally, it did look like this that we're looking at on the master plan, but now, it really, what we're trying to approve or being asked to approve is on the screen.
Yeah. So, this property line right here in blue is consistent with what's on the master plan. And then, what we removed, that property line is what we did.
I would think that, you know, we know the driveway is gonna be along the lot line. We're going to the shared access for those two lots, what is now Lot 1 and Lot 2. And that, so, I would just think that building, if there is any building on that portion of the lot, they know going into it, it has to fit within those guidelines.
It does.
What variance is it you're saying that you would go to the BZA with right now?
So, along this blue line, if we were to comply with the ordinance, I would have to move that property line down here. And then, so I'd have to have 30 feet, basically, between the drive aisle, the existing drive aisle, and before I could start any parking or buildable area. And so, that would reduce that buildable area to, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of about 75 feet, I think, outlined, depending on where you are along that property. And so, it just makes it so narrow that it would basically become a parking field, which I know we try to avoid along our streets, especially in the gateway.
I mean, I think it makes sense to leave the property line where it is and have the shared driveway, have the property line right down the middle and the driveway on both sides. But then, I wouldn't wanna see you come in and try to put some big building and push it up against the other lot line and say, it's because I don't have room. You know, then don't come in and ask for the variance on the other side because you've put yourself in this position.
Yes, ma'am.
It's part of the old BZA thing that we wrangle with is, is this self-created, you know?
Exactly.
In the end.
Well, and I think, and we talked about that with staff, and the fact that we had to line up here, it seemed like this was driving the location of all that.
That's a good point.
So, I think that, the variance that you're gonna have to ask for because the lot line is right down the middle of the road, basically.
Yes, ma'am.
I think is a reasonable request. I just wouldn't wanna see any other variance.
Correct. And that's exactly what we're trying to avoid. I'm afraid that if we moved the lot line to comply, we'd be coming back asking for a building setback or something like that because the lot is so, so narrow.
So, anybody that comes in to look at that knows what they've got to work with when they're looking at that. And so, you won't see it again, can you?
Nameless last words.
Yeah, right.
Just telling you.
Ken will get to see it at least three times.
No, Mr. Taylor's not gonna let that happen.
I think it makes sense. And I think we can make it clear to whomever at BZA. Of course, I only have one vote on that. But, that we're not gonna look for any other variances at the time they try to develop that, that piece of property. So, I'm gonna make a motion. We approve, subject to staff comments.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That finishes our gateway design overlay, and we're moving on to plats and plans where we have one item today, and it is Hidden River Estates Phase 1 Site Plan for 101 Single-Family Attached Dwelling Units Town Homes and an amenity center on 12.42 acres, zoned PUD, Hidden Rivers PUD. It's located along the north side of Casey Trail, east of Stony Meadow Drive. Hidden River Holding Company LLC is the developer. Ms. Rush?
Good afternoon, Planning Commission. Hope you're all doing well today. Just to reorient everybody on this project, this was a planned unit development that came through at the end of 20, I guess, 2019, 2020. And it was for a planned unit development for a total of 620 units with an overall density of 5.16 dwelling units to the acre. There were various townhome models that were proposed in the program book, including the River Row, which were three-story townhomes that would face out towards the river. There was a total of 64 of those. And today's site plan is for Phase 1. It includes 24 of those units. The Villas was another townhome model, and there were 196 that were approved in that program book. And today, there are 70 units that are proposed in this Phase 1, Section 1. The River Row included garage parking. There were two-car garages with a driveway or carport that would allow for an additional two cars. So, each unit had parking for four cars. And the Villas did not include garages, but it did have surface parking. And so, those surface parking units, stalls would be right in front of the units themselves.
And, Ms. Rush, I did just wanna point out in that handout we just handed out, the plans aren't on the screen before you because we've been working with the applicants and it just got us in these before the, actually, after the agenda was published. So, if you just reference the paper copies that Ms. Rush provided.
I'm lost in the-
The plans aren't in the agenda, Ms. Rush, because they-
Worked at all? Okay.
Yeah, but since they came in after the agenda was published.
All right. So, we'll just ignore what's on the screen for today then, for this item. Great. So, as Mr. Blomley had indicated, we did receive a set of plans, and those had some variations that deferred, deterred from what was in the approved program book. Staff had been meeting and working with the applicant and the developer throughout the process, and they made some changes to the plan set themselves to get those closer and to match what's in the program book. So, that is what's handed out to you today. Also included a copy of what was in the program book for the south portion, or the Phase 1 site plan that's in color, as well as the Villas and the row houses, what those architectural renderings were in the program book. I included a black and white copy. We received 66 pages, so I just included the portions that were the site plan and the elevations and the landscaping plans in that handout for you for eight and a half by 11. So, indicated as part of the requirements of the program book, the applicant would have to complete a road to the south that was gonna provide the primary access into the development. It was also gonna be used for the construction road into the site before Phase 1 could start construction. That road would have to be completed. So, the developer has acquired that land, has subdivided the land to the south, and has constructed the road. So, that requirement has been met per the program book. The site layout with the version that was presented or provided to staff on Monday does match what was in the program book. So, what was sent out previously, there was a significant number of units added and oriented closer towards the neighbors. Staff expressed concern about that increased intensity and the proximity to the neighbors that were existing. And so, the developer has revised it to go back and match what's in the program book. So, they do still have that separation. One of the things that we noted on the elevations, in the program book, we didn't receive the rear elevations, but in the site plan, we do have them. So, you can see, we asked for more articulation and more variation to the wall plane and to the roof plane. The developer has accommodated that request and has provided some variation to it. It does indicate on the current version that we have now that those rears of the units would be white. And the front of the units, what we had received does match what's in the program book, which was the variation of the stone and brick and the more earth tones. So, it would be helpful for staff and probably for the commission if we can get some confirmation from the developer today on what is the intention of the material and the colors for those units. It just seems odd to have the rears white and then the front in an earth-tone The other thing that we had asked for was for trash enclosures and compactors for the units that were not with garages, the ones that were surface parked, so that the homeowners would have a place to put their trash that would be in a weight that could be managed efficiently and efficacy could be, could be better for the community. The developer's indicated he's got some other concepts or ideas of how he wants to handle that trash. And I'll let him present that information to you, but I just wanted to make sure that I did convey to the commission that that was something that the staff was asking for was enclosures. For the units that do have garages and driveways, the row houses, staff is comfortable for those to not have an enclosure because those kinda get managed the same way as a single-family residence. Your trash cans are kept in the garage out of sight, and then they're wheeled out down the driveway, and they're at the end of the driveway or in the street. When you have units with no garages, there's really not a good place for storage. But, it's also, on trash day, where do they go? Does it sit on the sidewalk? Does it sit behind your car? And you're trying to leave for work? Just the mechanics of all that seemed a little confusing for staff. Other than that, I think I'm here to answer any questions. We do feel that it is significantly consistent. We are gonna ask for one condition to be added because we didn't have time to go through the 66 new pages they came in, that the commission add the condition that the site plan be consistent with the Hidden River Estates PUD program book, as well as city standards that are required of all developments, where there was not an exception listed in the program book. So, that concludes my presentation and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Rush. So, can you just tell me real quick, this picture that we're looking at, that we were just handed out, is this 101 Single-Family Attached Dwelling Units, and is this Phase 1?
There's not a phasing line on that particular drawing, so it's generally where, if you look along the east property line where that black arrow is located, that's generally where the Phase 1 cutoff line is.
So, the first roundabout?
Approximately there, yes, and to your right.
This would be-
Off of Casey Lane, Casey Trail, yeah.
Ms. Rush, I'm looking at elevations. There's two pages in this document. Is there, are there, are we supposed to be comparing something? There's a page, one of six on the bottom right-hand corner. It's just small. I can't tell you. It's the exterior elevations pages. There's two versions, and I'm not sure if we're supposed to be comparing.
I believe the first version with the new text on it were the modifications that came in with Monday. And those notes are, were in red, but what I could see, because it's kinda small font, it looks like that's where it's calling out the color, the white.
But, outside of the color being called out, is there something else? You had referenced, I thought there were maybe some additional fenestrations on the rear that, no?
Not that I could find, no. No, not that I could find, no.
The only difference in the two exterior elevation pages is that it calls out a color.
I think the notes, yeah.
Wait, you're talking about these two things?
No.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Got you.
Yeah, the eight and a half by elevens are a little difficult to understand what we're supposed to be looking at in each page, because it's so...
I agree.
I understand that it's sections to be blown up, but it's like, what am I supposed to be looking at and gathering from this? Is there a change? Is it just a blow up of the poolhouse area? And, or what are we looking for within this package outside of the white?
It was an attempt to try to show what was proposed in the black and white. That's what we received on Monday. I mean, it's a PDF, so it can go bigger. But that was to compare to what was in the program book itself.
So we don't have what was in the program book necessarily, so that we can see what the difference is? Is that right?
So you're saying this is what's in the program book? This was what was in the program book?
The colored pages that I've given you is the program book?
Okay.
And so you would compare, you would compare the black and white to that? Yeah.
Okay.
I have to say, this is a project that I really like, but I have no idea what we're supposed to do with this today.
I'm glad I don't have...
I'm just hearing, Brian, you're going to help us, or somebody is, because I'm just hearing two things that are different. And it seems like there's a lot more material here than just two things.
I'm not sure what you're looking at, so it's hard for me to...
Evidently what you turned in on Monday?
This packet of plans.
Yeah, this was our, I guess, the final, the construction plans to build the neighborhood. And we met with staff about, we had two buildings turned. It was going to kill the green space back here, so we changed those two buildings. And that was, that was the only thing we changed for them. As far as the buildings, we tried to make them look exactly like the plan book. We literally took the plan book and almost matched up the colors from the plan book.
So what about the white back we're talking about?
It's actually a light gray. It's hard to print out and show. But it's a, we didn't want, I did not want to do different colors on 10 different buildings in the back like the front. You've got stone, you've got brick, you've got different things to break the front up. The backs, I think it would just, it would just look busy. So we tried to keep all the backs where the parking is one color.
So what's different about that than what was in the original?
That's how we presented it in the plan book, too. I think, pretty sure, yes, we even talked about, that's what we showed in the plan book also. Is that correct, Marina? The backs being all one color, that's what we presented in the plan book, is that correct?
It says rear elevation on the bottom of this eight and a half by 11, and I'm seeing a mixture of brick and another material on the top.
I think she's talking about the villa sections, the one with no garages.
Yeah, these are two different.
Yeah, there's three. I know this plan, I know this development's been difficult since it started. I don't know why today would change it, so.
I agree. I love the development. I'm just struggling to see what we're suppo, I mean, we're given this, why? Are we supposed to be comparing it to something else? Because there's a change?
That's the plan, that's the, this is the plan we did in the plan book for the Villas. We've...
Right.
So I think, I think what Ms. Rush is trying to convey to y'all is that for the Villas, which are the, not the ones on the far east side of the development closest to the river, on the Villas, the front elevations were in the pattern book, but no rear elevations. And so the rear elevations are new to us today with the site plan review. And the rear elevations are showing the shoji white, it says rear, all shoji white. And so Ms. Rush can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that what she's saying is that since we're seeing this for the first time with the site plan submittal, the shoji white does not appear to be consistent with what was shown, at least for the, for the front elevations of the Villa units. And so we are, we are looking for some guidance on those rear elevations.
So is there a way we could see color renderings of the rear?
I've submitted color renderings for the rears. On A's, do we have those? They didn't change the renderings any. Okay, I'm assuming we don't have it here. It's basically the way I did Clark Boulevard, General's Run, all of them. I've kept the backs all one color to keep everything consistent in the back, where it doesn't look so busy back there when you're pulling back out parking. That's not really the area that everybody's going to toe mire, I don't think, is the back where all the parking is. I've tried to throw all the bells and whistles to the fronts and sides. That's, that was just our thought process.
And can you, on this, you know, the site plan page that we've got in color?
Yes, ma'am.
And so this is basically the...
That's Phase One, ma'am.
Phase One that we're talking about is this side. The, this is the River Row neighborhood, are the ones on the one line across the back, on the riverside. And these two rows are both, are they the Villas?
They're the Villas, ma'am.
Those are Villas. And these are Villas.
Those will be Villas also.
And so those are the only two types we have in Phase One. And so this site plan that we're being asked to approve today for these that we're talking about are all either River Row or Villas.
Yes, there's another section of the landings, but it'll be a year down the road in the next phase.
And there are these others over here.
Yes, ma'am. It'll be, that's similar to General's Landing right now.
And so the amenity center is the other thing that we're being asked to approve today. And I take it, what you're saying is that it is as it was presented in the original plan book?
We changed the amenity center around a little bit to make it more modern. We had like a Craftsman-style amenity center. And this is just a secondary center. The main amenity centers will be what is Dr. John's personal house. That's where everything eventually is going to go. This is just another pool for this area to have down here for a while. But we made it more modern. We made it white also, with the black roofs and stuff on it. This is a modern neighborhood, not really a Craftsman neighborhood, so we tried to keep everything in that modern tones. It's so hard to do it on paper. I'm a guy that likes to do it out in the field. And General's Landing, I literally painted six times before I got it the way I wanted it. So I wished I was better on paper at making decisions, but I'm not.
And so really, we're just, we're approving the site plan. We've already really approved in the plan book the elevations.
I think that's correct, that's what I'm...
That's not changing necessarily. This is just showing us the elevations of the two types of properties that are in this Phase One that we're approving today.
You're correct, Chair Jones. So typically with the program book, there's a lot of detail. And so staff spends time to ensure that the consistency of what's coming forward for building permits matches exactly what's in the program book. With this program book, there was a lot of focus on traffic and impacts to the roads and the neighborhoods. And some of those details were not vetted or, you know, included in the last version that was approved. So we're bringing this program back to, not the program book, I'm sorry, the site plan to you to look at those details, just to make sure that that is what you're comfortable with. So yes, they are consistent with the program book, but there is more detail that is involved, and we're wanting you to look at today. The set of plans that came in with the original submittal a couple weeks ago did include the amenity center building. For some reason, Monday's did not include that. I think they were focusing mostly on the changes that they had met with the planning director last week with. So I just wanted to let you know that the amenity center does look exactly like it does in the program book. Same design, the restrooms, the interior mailboxes, and general layout. I think the pool shape changed a little bit, but, so that is consistent with it. The row houses, they did have rear elevations in the program book, as Ms. Garland had indicated. And the colored elevations that came in a couple weeks ago did mirror what was presented in that as well. So staff was very comfortable with the row houses. So it's just basically the issues that I had brought up.
Okay.
Can I ask if the approved plan book, front elevations, are the details like the modern doors and light fixtures, are those types of things? That's the expectation that's been set. That would be held to the expectation of what should be installed, correct? And the nice wire balconies to give you this modern feel. So those are the elements to me that, you know, make this pop as modern. And when I look at the rear elevation, it does look extremely flat. So I guess my question would be, it doesn't take much, and one color is fine. Again, not knowing exactly what showed you white, you know, stark white would probably not be my choice to keep with the warmth of everything. But, you know, the door and the way the windows are trimmed and the light fixture on that backside alone could just keep it from being the bare minimum, which is what this really starts to look like?
I don't mind, and once we get it built, if the plan was to come out, we can, we can sort of play with it out there color-wise on things. I don't mind, well, I guess it's up to you guys to give me a little leeway maybe on doing that with the planning staff. I do agree, if we can add those details in the back. A lot of those lights and stuff are going to be covered up with a fence behind it. So it's just hard to dress those up, because you got them kind of levered over. I just, I really just didn't want them sticking out with different colors. But I don't, I don't mind painting different colors if that's what you guys think.
How high is the fence that's around each of those Villas backside?
We do six-foot privacy fences, which will be vinyl, vinyl fences.
Madam Chair, Ms. Garland and other members of the Planning Commission, one option that you do have at your disposal, since the backs of those Villa units are somewhat of a, since we're kind of starting from scratch right now, since those weren't shown, the specifics of the rear elevations were not shown in the pattern book, what you can do is approve the site plan with the conditions that Ms. Rush has identified, all except for the rear elevations of the Villas. And then we can bring the rear elevations for the Villas back to you for review and approval after, after we've worked with the applicant and gotten some, gotten some additional detail, and perhaps the color renderings that Mr. Burns referred to. And that way, he can continue to move forward with the, with the project, with that one detail outstanding, to come back to you.
Can I, and I'll just, a quick question before, so we have some guidance on this, or so I know how to give guidance on it better. I mean, this stuff is not my forte, right? I mean, this is not, looking at this stuff and design stuff is not my gig. But I mean, the rear elevations on that look way different than this and look better. And I guess I'm just a little bit, I guess my question would be, if the rear elevations are kind of different on this one, or the color? It's not all one, is that all one, I mean, it's not, doesn't it look like all one color, like a big white?
No, we have, on the River Row, we have different, we have, we're matching the fronts up.
Yeah.
Because they're going to be visible somewhat a little bit from the greenway, so.
I guess what I'm saying is, if that's okay on the River Row, why is it busy on the Villas?
There's so many of them. River Row's got like buildings of six and eight. Some of the ones in the Villas are, they're small, some of them are 16 foot wide. And like I said, it's just paint colors. I don't mind doing it. It's just, I thought it would look better.
I think also you're right. You drive past the rear of the River Villas. That's why they're more predominant. The rear, I'm sorry, of the, yeah, of the riverside.
I think you do.
The others are internal to the parking area.
They are, yeah.
Which is...
Oh, I thought you meant outside the, outside of the property.
What we're talking about is what's inside that parking area for the lower two rows. Was the fence type approved in the original package on the... Again, that's another area I would ask to really see some detail on, because that's, that's your half of the backside of the elevation as you are back there.
Did you have a, like a suggestion of a type of fence?
You're just, you know, you're seeing a lot of these refurbs and where people are going more modern with the more linear fence rather than the, you know, I don't know, I don't even know what you're thinking.
I was thinking more privacy than anything there. That's really the only place.
They can still be private, but I've seen some modern...
We can play with that with the plans, with the staff. The staff's been great to work with on this, so.
Do you just think that'll help address the starkness to the back? Either the fence that you plan to use and any small detail on the upper part that you can see?
Okay.
So can I ask a quick question? This may just, y'all may just think I'm dumb about this. But, you know, when I go through and count these buildings that are, like if I'm looking at this Phase One, is it appropriate to count the individual in the plan book, you know, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight per building? Does that mean it's going to be eight per building? Or are you saying it's going to be a lot more than that?
No, we've tried to keep in one building. Some of them's 10, some of them's eight, some of them's six when it makes a turn. We try to keep them on, the way our color scheme is, is the way it draws out, we try to keep them at even numbers, so it keeps a symmetrical look to it.
So I mean, I got, I'm looking at this middle one down here, right here, in the River Row, and it's 10.
That's not the River Row.
With, I thought this was River Row down here.
That's the back, yeah, that's what's...
Oh, golly.
That backs up to the stone.
You talking about the...
Are you supposed to know this?
Councilman Alliance.
Yeah, this bottom section, the bottom two rows then are...
The Villas.
The Villas.
I cannot answer, I don't know if we changed the building count. We could have changed the building count where it shows an R, but the number's not going to change as a total.
The total number.
We may have tried to make it where odd building was an even number to keep the symmetrical look of the buildings.
But the total number of units stays the same?
Yeah, then we're not adding any units by no means. We would have a, have a rush of people here if that was the case.
One thing I might add to what Ms. Rush said, just as she was speaking that, it kind of came to me when she was talking about being conditional on staff comments as far as whoever's going to make this motion. She asked that we made it as the plan book states, and it's up to city standards. We may also want to say, as the plan book states, with the exception of whatever staff sees as improvement, it sounds like staff's going to be involved, and it may be, it may be something different than what the plan book states. But if it's an improvement, we don't want to preclude that from being able to happen, I guess was the point. So if we say it's exactly as the plan book, well, it can't be. If there's no rear elevations on one of them and no fence detail, it can't possibly be as the plan book states, everything in here. So probably need to say with some ability for staff to deal with that.
The one other question she had asked me to explain was, we're doing this as a private hall neighborhood without dumpsters. Same, it's a bigger version of what I'm doing in Billboro. We're, we hire a company, and she asked questions I couldn't answer on the phone one day, so I called and just had to ask these questions, like how do they, they basically don't, they don't have the armed trucks that pick the trash up. Private Hall have people that take the, they set them on a lift, the lift dumps them. But I did not want to do dumpsters. I think we're going to show a dumpster enclosure area that could be added one day, 20 years down the road if needed. But I didn't really want to do a place where I'm going to put garbage cans. I just think it's a place for trash to sit. They come, the people pull them out to the edge of their private sidewalk, not the street sidewalk. They pull them over to the trucks, they empty them. I didn't know how to answer that, they was she called, because I've not actually done this service yet. But now I have got it set up, so I can, I feel more comfortable with that process now. Because I even asked them if it mattered if all the garbage cans were like in one spot in a container, and they go, no, we'll pull them around sidewalk and empty them. My goal was not to have dumpster pads on the site. I think the private hall is just a better way to go. In this, in this neighborhood, there's going to be a lot of older people that'll probably move in it, and it's hard for them to carry stuff to a dumpster sometimes. And the private hall is not...
Each unit would pull, you said their trash out to the private sidewalk, which is in the interior parking section?
Yes. Well, no, there's a sidewalk, there's a parking, there's a sidewalk that goes in front, then they got a sidewalk that goes to their door. And that's where they would pull it to on trash day. The people with the garages would just pull it to the edge of their driveway.
But when that truck pulls through that parking area, do they go in between the parking, parked cars to get to that trash bin and...
No, we have to have, each parking, you'll have a sidewalk that leads all around to everything, so. And they won't be able to park cars in front of the sidewalks there, where you go in. I think I'm saying that right, am I?
I just mentioned to you guys, and I'm trying to kind of not talk too much about this just because of the way this came through council and where I was on it at that point. I'm not, I don't want to poo-poo anything or any of that. I just, I will say, as it relates to the, to the garbage pickup, I do recall that being an issue at the council meeting. And I don't know really how to deal with that from a standpoint of saying, how much did other people, what did other people expect? of saying, how much did other people, what did other people expect as they approved that? You know, I didn't, so I don't, you know, I mean, I don't want to say, I don't know how to answer that question. But it is something that we may need to consider as it relates to the trash pickup. I do remember in our council meeting that that was a subject of conversation and whatever was agreed upon is, I'd be a little hesitant just from my standpoint to say it's going to, that we would vary from that until I knew, I mean, the way just my brain works until I knew that the council was okay with that because they voted to approve the project based on something.
I do have to confront, you're right. You're absolutely correct. And Mr. Burns has consistently said that he would have kind of a, I think he called a concierge type of service where somebody comes and gets the trash and they're managing it that way rather than an enclosure. As Brian can say, my questions were, is similar as Ms. Garland says, how do you go from the sidewalk that's in the back patio to the truck that's in the parking lot? Do you squeeze in between the cars? Do you lift the can over your head? I was just trying to envision how this would happen because you have a long row of cars and units. Just how does the trash go from the can to the truck? And so I think you were trying to get some more information and maybe we're still not there yet. So I'm okay with it not having an enclosure if we can just get a better understanding of how the logistics would go. My concern is that people's cars may get bumped or things may get knocked over and not picked up until the next week or something, but I am open to more, you know, information.
As long as there's a sidewalk leading from the parking lot to the units, they'll pull to that sidewalk, they'll pull the trash cans to the units and empty them.
And just right now on the drawing we're looking at, you wouldn't be able to do that. If you look at these parking spaces, you wouldn't be able to do that. So it may be that you might have to have some dedicated space that is set aside for trash cans to be left on the days that trash, I mean, when you physically try to figure out how they're going to pick up those trash cans, when you look at this drawing that we're looking at, I don't see how that's going to happen. So I think what we would need is like a lot of times we have a little bit of a blown-up drawing of maybe one set of buildings, the sidewalks that are associated with that and how it is you're saying that the trash can is going to get from their unit to the parking area where the truck can actually get to the trash can.
Okay, we can...
Because I can't see how that's going to work right now.
We can draw that out.
If you can get that where staff is comfortable with that. And if she has any questions at all, I think, you know, of course she would bring it back to us, but...
We'll be glad to get that for her.
I don't see, I agree. You know, I just don't see how it's going to happen right now. And I think it's just the size of the drawing we're looking at.
It'd be nice to, makes it hard.
Hopefully, there's a better, you know, you know, we can, we can get there, but we just need a little more detail.
So just for my clarification, the garbage cans, where are they going to be stored on the villas? Are they going to be in this little side building that's on the back of every unit?
The building has a three-foot door so it can be stored in the side building. That's what the people want, Clark Boulevard. You know, they keep their personal cans and stuff. Or if you've got a whole fenced in area, you can put it in your back porch, too.
Got it.
And I think when you do whatever this drawing is that's going to explain this trash pickup.
We can draw like two buildings with the sidewalks.
Where the trash can's going to be sitting throughout the week and then where it comes and how it gets out to get picked up.
We'll make sure to have that done for you.
So are we saying we're leaving this up to staff with the end result or is it going to come back before us? Or is it just if you don't feel comfortable with what the, I'm looking at you Marina, if you don't feel comfortable with the end result, that's when it's going to come back to us?
I'll repeat what I heard from some of the commissioners is that you would like to see the rear elevations of the villas come back and just the logistics of how the trash would work and the fencing as well. Does that sound fair? And then to move forward with the site plan itself to keep things going forward.
And I'll have to say, I would be, I'm so surprised that our fencing was not in our original plan book, you know? I would think every plan book we've ever looked at that had anything that might have any fencing, we've had fencing in the plan book. So...
We had the dog park.
Shame on us that we missed it the first time.
I'm sure there was the Huddleston Steel stock photo of the dog jumping after the frisbee.
It was there.
Bill's going to pull that out and show us where that fence is in there because we approved it the first time, I'm sure. But yes, we may, we obviously can't, don't know what the fence looks like.
All right, I'm going to make a motion unless somebody else has got other comments. So, all right, make a motion that we approve the site plan with Ms. Rush bringing back the rear of the villas for us to review. Brian is going to show us how the trash works.
Yes, sir.
All right. I thought there was one other item. I can't remember now what it was.
The fence.
Yeah, and then see what the fence is, fence is going to look like. And subject to all other staff comments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain, one abstention. Okay, thank you, Mr. Burns.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Rush. All right, moving on to new business. We have a zoning application for approximately 4.6 acres located along West Northfield Boulevard and Sulfur Springs Road to be rezoned from RS10 to PCD Sanders Corner, P&amp;H Joint Venture applicant. Ms. Green?
Good afternoon, thank you. Our first item of new business is a request for you to schedule a public hearing for June 2nd for an application our department has received for rezoning property that's located along the north side of West Northfield Boulevard and west of Sulfur Springs Road. This property is currently zoned RS10, single-family residential district with a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. And the application that's before you today is to consider changing the zoning to PCD, Planned Commercial District. And I think I just got there. There we go. And the properties are shown on the map. Technically, there are three parcels. There's a little tiny triangle in the bottom-left corner of the property that makes the third parcel, just to clarify that for you. You can see that the property is in a mostly developed area. To the south is a, is the Northfield Village PCD, which was developed with a self-storage facility and a commercial out parcel with limited commercial uses. But actually, to the south, and I'm sometimes told to tell too many stories, but the very first neighborhood meeting I ever attended in February 2005 was for the property to the south. And it has since, just recently been developed, so it's nostalgia for me, I guess. But also to the east is the Saddle Brook Apartments, and I do have the number of units there, which has 267 multifamily dwellings. The Saddle Brook Plan Development also has 84 small lot, residential detached lots. And there's a site plan approved for 68 townhomes, which it's my understanding that'll be under development soon. And then, of course, Sinking Creek and its floodway are on the, are located between Sulfur Springs Road and those apartments. The, this property is somewhat familiar because a portion of it was part of a zoning application a couple of years ago. That application was called Sanders Corner and this application's also called Sanders Corner, just so that you know, the property owner were the Sanders family. And the initial application came in at the request of the family who owned the property at the time and their Realtor, Mr. Larry Sims, represented them, so that may ring some bells. At that time, the current property owner, P&amp;H Joint Venture, purchased this property and the additional parcel to the north. And so their request is for you to consider a PCD. The previous Sanders Corner PCD did eventually get a public hearing and recommend, or approval from the city council on first reading. The applicants never brought it back for a second reading, so the zoning never changed to PCD. That's why it's still zoned RS15. So I think the last time council saw it was August 22nd, 2019, and it had been submitted initially in 2017.
Wait.
So this proposed plan development, PCD Sanders Corner, is larger than that initial application. Initially, it was 2.5 acres and this application's 4.6, so you can see it's considerably larger. The packet that you have for today's meeting also includes a program book prepared by SEC that gives some specifics for the project. Essentially, there is four single, there are four single-story buildings. The one on the corner is a gas station with a small retail tenant or restaurant tenant that has a drive-through. That's Phase One. Phase Two is for a commercial center, and a commercial center is essentially a strip center, what we, what some people informally call a strip center. So here we are, here's the page. So you can see this is Phase One, Phase Two. And then in the back are two buildings that are being identified as office buildings and those are proposed to be in Phase Three. Phasing can change with development, but I think they're very confident that the gas station is the primary goal at this point. They want to have a gas station on the corner there. I did provide Mr. Taylor and his colleagues with some comments from our various departments, city organizations about this development. Some of those comments included, of course, the architecture. We really wanted this, if it were going to be a commercial node or a neighborhood commercial node, that it reflects some of those neighborhood characteristics, the roof pitch and the materials and type. And so he's working with architects to, I think that the buildings two, three, and four probably meet expectations, but Building One needs a little additional work. I also have gone through the uses permitted with them and asked them to look at those and knew that the Planning Commission and City Council would likely scrutinize those uses, those permitted uses. And of course, the first application, Sanders Corner, did not allow a gas station, but this one does. So that will be probably a topic of conversation for people, for neighbors who might be interested in the area. Some of the other uses that I had concerns with are packaged beer store. They are removing that as a use but want to keep liquor store as a permitted use. I asked for financial services to be removed because I was concerned with the check into cash places, but similar to what was done across the street, Mr. Taylor proposed that financial services remain, but a caveat that no check, cash advance or check advance places be allowed there because that could be something that you do. And then the garden and lawn supplies, I was concerned with how that might look from the outside. I know it's nice to have greenhouses in your neighborhood, but considering the lot layout here, I didn't want there to be outdoor storage. So rather than removing that use, he's adding the caveat that no outdoor storage for garden and lawn supplies. So there are some smaller garden lawn supplies that can fit into neighborhoods pretty well and that's what they're proposing. And there are some uses that were identified as special use permit that I believe they're going to remove the special use permit caveat and just allow by right. There were some, the exception that they've requested is a setback exception for Buildings Three and Buildings Four from proposed Oak Haven. And they initially said 10 feet and now staff was uncomfortable with that distance closer right away, so they pushed it to 20 feet. And I think that we can, staff can be comfortable with a 20-foot setback there. So initially, that was some of our conversations. Leads me to Oak Haven Drive extension. I feel like I'm getting some, some eyes at that. I did talk with various engineers and traffic engineers and engineering department, public infrastructure. And currently, actually, let's see. I wrote down days because I knew I wouldn't remember it. There is a plat recorded that, let's see, the Forest Hills Estate, Section 8, final plat, recorded in 1974, dedicated right-of-way for the proposed Oak Haven Drive extension and a sewer easement. So there is no road from here to here, but there is right-of-way. And I know there may have been conversations with the previous application, but of course that was a different applicant, it didn't have frontage here. City staff is requesting that the developer for this property be financially responsible for constructing that road and building it to our standards and dedicating it to the city to accept. We think that there is value in that providing the connectivity to the development. We really don't think, although some concerns were expressed from the residents, that people will be traveling through the neighborhood without a destination because it actually doesn't lead anywhere. We think it'll be a benefit to the neighbors and also benefit to the site. We are still working with Mr. Taylor to get some of the details worked out on the final plan, but we believe we can have those in time for a June 2nd public hearing. I believe that he'd like to come up and present some information on the application. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them for you either before, or no, there's no public hearing, sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Matt Taylor of SEC. I'll try to be brief. I think that we're largely in agreement with and are going to make all the revisions that staff has asked us to make as part of the application. I think the two items that we would like to leave is the liquor store use and then they asked us to construct all of Oak Haven Drive with Phase One. And what we have proposed is that we build that part with Phase One and then the rest, sorry, would happen whenever we make this connection over here. And so, and that's purely just trying to, we've already got a lot of other roadway improvements. We've got turn lanes on Sulfur Springs, we've got turn lane improvements on Northfield, both left and right turns. And so just trying to break up some of that off-site cost over a couple of phases and felt like that would help with the neighbors as well, not making that connection day one. So other than that, I think all the architecture, we've got all that in the works that Ms. Green has asked us to make and have worked with her extensively before the application anyway to get really close to where we needed to be to begin with, we felt like. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. We did host a neighborhood meeting, I think about roughly a month ago. We probably had, I think, between 20 and 25 people, so about 10 to 15 households represented there.
So where does, I got a call on this before it's ever been brought to us. So where does Oak Haven Drive end up in this neighborhood? Where does it tee into or is it Jones Boulevard eventually or?
Kind of have to be, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Think. I was going to try to find the best.
I was thinking too.
So, of course, you see our site. This here is Jones, or sorry, that is Oak Haven.
Right.
Jones is over this direction. It's offset from Jones on the south side. I believe this road is Trinity. I could be wrong about that name, but I think that's Trinity.
I think you're right.
And so basically, you've got, if you were coming out of this development, you would have to make a left to get over to Jones and make another left to get back to Northfield. So you would have to, like that.
So you're better off turning right on Northfield out of the development?
Yes.
Is all we're doing today is scheduling a public hearing?
Yeah.
June 2nd.
Can I ask one question before?
Yes, you can.
Sir?
It has nothing to do...
You do need to schedule a public hearing, but if there's feedback and he can incorporate it prior to the public hearing if you wanted to give him early feedback, I know they appreciate that. I would say regarding the street, if you don't mind giving staff a little bit more time to make sure that all of our staffs on board with whatever the proposal is, we'll be clear either way at the public hearing with where it ends up. But all we need is the public hearing scheduled, but we appreciate feedback.
And my question was, as it relates to the other two lots that are on frontage, is there any reason why they didn't try to, or did they try to?
You mean these down here?
Yeah, to make it a clean break.
We did not, to my knowledge, they did not try to pursue those. I will, where Building One and Two are is essentially where the original Sanders Corner, Sanders Corner PCD was that Ms. Green mentioned. And my client had the opportunity to purchase what was behind, and this was one large property. So basically, we bought two properties right there. And I think there had been some feedback at some point about the importance of getting this rear lot to help with some of the Oak Haven improvements, is my understanding.
So I'll give you a little bit of feedback on this just while we're here. I mean, what I remember, I honestly didn't remember it getting passed at the council level. I remember a lot of conversation about the turning, the ingress and egress out onto Northfield right here being a problem because, you know, you come over that hill. If you're headed east, you're coming over that hill and trying to go left into that, coming down a hill and no real space to come in there. And, and you know, the interesting thing that, and you know, look, that property to the north here, the second piece of property that was added, I think, yeah, there was a lot of discussion saying you needed to have that because, for what you wanted to do on the first part, to give the buffer to the neighbor, right? And so now you've just crammed two more buildings in there and a gas station and a liquor store. I mean, I, you know, I don't want to say where I... I mean, I, you know, I don't want to say where I, you know, whether we're wasting time doing a public hearing, just on my opinion on it, but, you know. If you had a couple of the same buildings that looked, and you got this ingress up here further up the hill, if that is in fact further up the hill, which doesn't look like there's a turn-in into that upper, is there an access off of Northfield headed east into that, into that western, that western entrance into the parking lot?
Talking about here?
Yes.
Yeah, so we're building, we will be building left turn lanes in Northfield for that access point. And so, we've got left turn lane there, and we're also building right turn lane into this entrance. This entrance will be a right-in, right-out only, because it's closer to the intersection.
Gotcha.
And I think this access point and this were consistent with the original PCD. And then, there, I believe you're right, there was a lot of conversation about that rear roadway. Do you have the original?
Yeah. I put both the Northfield Village and this PCD in the book, so you can see it.
There you go. And so I think, there was a lot of conversation about that access point, and that's the reason, so what they heard from that was go get the property to the north, so they could move that access point for a full access further back. And so this right here is consistent.
I remember that too, but I clearly remember the coming down the hill being an issue to turn into, and if I remember it right, the applicant didn't want to do it unless they could get the access coming in from the east on Northfield. I mean, coming from the west on Northfield, but it's all right, we can get a public hearing.
And also, that one from 2017 did not include a left-in, left-out at the further-away section, if I'm reading that right.
You're talking about down here?
No, I'm talking about up there.
You're talking about here?
There's no left-hand turns out.
Yeah, I think you're right, and, but I didn't see any improvements planned out here, and I think that was the difference.
So, by the way, Oak Haven dead ends. It is Trinity that comes into it. It kind of comes down, and then just kind of turns into Oak Haven, Forest Worth.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions or comments before scheduled public hearing? If not, we're ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion. Set a public hearing for, what, June 2nd?
June 2nd.
A second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next item B is an annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 39 acres located along Elam Road. Laurel H. Maples is the applicant. Ms. Rush?
I'm driving the computer now. Thank you. Yes, the respective property owner Laurel H. Maples has submitted a petition requesting her property be annexed into the city of Murfreesboro. The subject property for annexation is 38.8 acre portion of a 185 and a half acre parcel. It's located along the east side of Elam Road and south of Joby Jackson Parkway, just west of Interstate 24. The application is also accompanied with a request to zone the property to general industrial. The study area also includes a 275-foot-long segment of Elam Road, the right-of-way in front of the subject property, bringing the total study area to 39 acres. The study area is in the city's urban growth boundary and is contiguous to the city limits along the north and western property lines. We're, I'm currently preparing a plan of services and study that will be presented to the Planning Commission at the public hearing. Staff is asking the Planning Commission to discuss this item and set a public hearing for June 2, 2021.
Okay.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion and a second for a public hearing on June 2. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, June 2. And next, we have a companion application. It's the zoning application for approximately 39 acres located along Elam Road to be zoned G1 simultaneous with annexation. Laurel H. Maples is the applicant. Ms. Rush?
Thank you. The subject property is 38.8 acres, and it's a portion of the 185 and a half acre parcel located along Elam Road. The applicant Laurel H. Maples has submitted the application to request general industrial simultaneous with her request for annexation into the city. The property is currently zoned RM in the county, which is residential medium density. The adjacent zoning on the properties to the north and the northeast is also general industrial. To the west, south, and east is RM and located in the county unincorporated. The properties surrounding the parcel are primarily vacant and agricultural land. The future land use map of the Murfreesboro 2035 indicates that Business Park is the most appropriate land use character for this project area. The Business Park character typically has offices, light industrial, not residential, and includes public and institutional uses. GI is a newer zoning designation that the city has created since the adoption of the future land use map, 2035. So it's not listed as a compatible zoning district, but staff feels that the uses and the way the GI operates would be compatible with this land use designation of Business Park. The action that's needed, we're asking the Planning Commission to discuss this item and schedule the matter for a public hearing for June 2, 2021. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions or discussion?
No, I'll move for approval to schedule a public hearing for June 2.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, June 2. Next, we have a zoning application for approximately 17.26 acres located along North Tennessee Boulevard to be rezoned from RM16 and OG to PRD. The Point at Raiders Campus, PRD.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission.
MTSU LLC is the applicant, and Ms. Smith, go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. This afternoon, we have an initial discussion on a submitted PRD. This is for an existing apartment site located on North Tennessee Boulevard, just north of East Northfield Boulevard. The project, as you can see here, in orange and red, OG and RM16 zoning, about the city's airport, which is actually zoned RS15, and is surrounded by RS12, CF, RM16, PRD around the existing site. The property, as you look at it here, was recently purchased by the organization, and they'll be coming up to explain their process a little bit, but their PRD is being requested because the underlying zone district of RM16 only allows 16 units to the acre. We're looking at a 19.98 units per acre, and here's the kicker, within the existing building footprints and the existing base of those buildings. So, this currently is consisting with four-bedroom and three-bedroom apartments, was originally scheduled for student housing. So you basically rent a room, and you don't necessarily know who your other three roommates are going to be. That doesn't necessarily work for, and has not worked for, this particular project for a while. So they are looking at doing a rebranding of the property, which would allow for more units, but more one and two bedrooms, fewer three bedrooms, no four bedrooms. So that really changes how they outline, but it actually reduces the bedroom count and the bathroom count by about 23%. So it's a little bit hard concept, I don't believe we've seen it here in Murfreesboro as an example. This in your packet just shows a little bit. The top one is really where you see, now that's a horrible one, good, thank you, three bedrooms. So a three-bedroom unit shown kind of in the top, all of those are located in the center of all of the buildings within the complex. So they really have two different layouts where they would either change those three bedrooms into two units, one being a two-bedroom, one being a one-bedroom unit, or keeping them into a larger three-bedroom unit, meaning a larger master bedroom, but really more traditional apartment housing versus the student housing that has been failing for a number of years. Under the four-bedroom bifurcation, they would really look at splitting those units in half. And again, the four-bedroom units are traditionally on the outside of those, each of those building packs, and the changes between the first floor would be different than those on the second and third floor based upon where those entry points are. In looking at the project, we did do some community outreach, and there was a neighborhood meeting that was held. We did have several neighbors attend those meetings. They were most concerned with one of our top items, which was trash. We love talking trash, but we don't like it on our airport. So here, they do have an existing compactor. They are looking at adding traditional trash dumpsters throughout the site, so that one people can easily access them. In apartment complexes, they've had problems, you can't fit certain-sized things in compactors, so they go elsewhere. And then there's been some problem with deferred maintenance in those units not properly working. As far as the future land use map in this area, it does call out for multifamily residential land use character, and RM12, RM16 PRDs are all compatible districts. And believe it or not, that land use allows for a 19.98, excuse me, 19.93 units per acre. They're asking for 19.98 dwelling units to the acre. But this project, with the uniqueness of it, we believe that the proposed reconfigurations and renovations would allow for reinvestment, desperate reinvestment, to this existing complex that's been in disrepair and would bring onsite management that would promote the creation of a safer environment and a more desirable living environment as well. But after the staff presents this initial information, we're asking the owner to provide an initial description to better understand what this concept is, and then staff would recommend that we do a public hearing on the June 2 date. And with that, I would ask the applicant to come to the lectern.
Thank you, Holly. I'm Brick Murfree of Murfree Goodman Law Firm. Pleased to be here this afternoon before y'all. I'm going to introduce the new owners of the property. I just wanted to say how excited I am that they've committed to come to our community and redevelop what is a failing apartment complex. I mean, it is, and it's a problem. The neighbors came to the meeting and reported crime, and loud noise, and, you know, just intimidation, and all sorts of terrible things that are just not acceptable. And so the plan is to come in and divide up some of the units and make them more marketable. And while the unit count is going up, the actual, you know, people coming and going, the actual bedrooms and bathrooms are going down. So it's kind of a little bit of a hard concept, but the density's actually going down versus going up, but the unit count is going up from a technical standpoint. The neighborhood meeting went very well, and I'm really excited to be involved in this project. I hope it's the beginning of many more to come, to redevelop some of the failed sites around MTSU. So without further ado, Mr. Christopher Moran, one of the owners of the company, would like to, like to present their concept.
Thank you, Mr. Murfree.
Thank you, Brick. Thank you, Holly. Good afternoon. My name's Christopher Moran, Principal of Capstone Real Estate Investments. Little additional color for this bit of a counterintuitive request. Again, the subject was purpose-built in 2005, and when I say purpose-built, it's specifically for student housing, and that is synonymous with a four-bedroom, four-bath unit, of which this, this community is predominantly comprised of. And so, given its location, or proximity, I should say, from MTSU's campus and the vintage, it has been on a, quite a steep downward trajectory over the last several years, and the previous owners have attempted to combat additional student supply in the market and some of these other forces with reducing rates rather significantly. And that subsequently has attracted a lot of non-students. And so, many of the problems that Holly has referenced is, is really stemming from the fact that you've got people occupying a property and not the people that it was intended for. So, so just like anything, when things become used without the original intent, that's where a lot of these, these problems exist, and that's most certainly what's, what's happened here. So, how do we fix it? My company has done this very same thing in many other college towns across primarily the southeast, Tuscaloosa, Alabama, Hattiesburg, Mississippi. In fact, I just left earlier this morning from Lexington, Kentucky, which we're underway on, and several others. The plan is to, again, redesign within the existing footprint to deliver a property or a product that eliminates that, that purpose-built student element. So eliminating all, all four bedrooms in conjunction with the operation. So, eliminating the roommate matching, eliminating the lease cycle that mirrors that of the academic term, and our own management is in place, and we will lease by the unit and not by the bedroom. So that's, that's really, in addition to a different type product, not catering specifically to student by way of our operations, we believe, will really begin to attract a, predominantly a non-student element. So as Brick had mentioned, it's a little odd, the unit count goes up, the bedroom count, the potential number of residents that could be housed at this community goes down quite substantially. And so that means, of course, less traffic, that means less noise, that means less trash, just fewer people coming and going in general. So, along with the reconfiguration, a lot of other kind of amenities and upgrades will be done, predominantly that of deferred maintenance. So in this downward spiral, the previous owners just really been unable to afford addressing many, many things there onsite. So, let's see, so, again, we believe that the conversion will, will change the clientele who's interested. Likely that will mean fewer students, and likely that translates into kind of a longer stay. Bless you. And so, you know, an older, you know, kind of more vested, responsible tenant is, I believe, what, what everybody, city, property owner, and neighbors would benefit by, you know, tend to be a little bit more, more responsible. So, you know, our goal, again, as Holly mentioned, is, you know, really to just convert this from a failed student property to, you know, a vibrant, fully-upgraded conventional community. And again, something that, you know, both the immediate neighborhood, the city at large, and Capstone as, as owner, you know, can all be proud of.
Can I have a question? What kind of, I mean, if, say you've done this in Tuscaloosa, and what, do you have any kind of data on what, what it looks like as it relates to the number of student occupied versus what it now is, or post, you know, a year, two years post, whatever?
Sure. So, actually, after our first, one of these kind of reconfigurations, which is- So, actually, after our first, one of these kind of reconfigurations, which is very, very similar to this one in particular, it was a failed community, one of the furthest from University of Alabama's campus. It was approximately 60% occupied when my firm purchased it. Within 13 months, we delivered it entirely, reconfigured, 100% occupied, and only about 35%, which is an estimate, fair housing, you know, we can't specifically ask if there's a student or not, but you can kind of tell. So our internal estimate was only about 35% student. So the city of Tuscaloosa was thrilled. Their findings were that these failed student properties with the inability to kind of maintain economic stability were hotbeds for crime, and so they actually, unbeknownst to us, used our first Tuscaloosa property as a case study. So happy to provide that to, you know, Holly and share, but that was what, again, they used to address the oversupply of student property. And the oversupply of student property is kind of an acute problem because it's so specialized that it is not, it doesn't cater to any other type of housing, right? I mean, there's a reason why all these other, you know, properties being built in your town and others are not four-bedroom, four-bath. It just simply does not work for any, you know, non-student. So, again, this is very much like what we've done, you know, many times over, and, you know, MTSU, the purpose-built community around it, is probably one of the most lopsided communities that we analyze, and we do this, you know, across the country. There's only about three other communities that have a higher percentage of what I refer to as underclassman product, three and four-bedroom product. So it's highly disproportionate, to the tune of about 87%. So that's just way too much for-for product that, again, only caters to one small demographic.
Sounds like a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay.
Scheduled a public hearing?
Absolutely.
June 2nd? 2nd?
I think that was a motion and a second.
It was.
All in favor, please state aye. Any opposed? Okay, June 2nd, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have a zoning application for approximately 0.33 acres located along Leaf Avenue to be rezoned from RS 10 to PRD. Leaf Avenue PRD and BNA Homes LLC is the applicant. Ms. Smith?
Boy, this driver is really touchy today. Good afternoon again, Planning Commission. This is also another PRD item for your consideration, although this particular site is actually a vacant site, very small site located on Leaf Avenue, south of the intersection of Palmer and Leaf, also south of East Clark Boulevard. As you can see in this particular photo, there's RS 10 located to the side or backside of the property, there's a dental office due north of the project, single-family due south, and then RM 12 and RM 16 zoning across the street, and an RS 15 church adjacent to that. The existing zone district of RS 10 only allows for a one-unit of single-family dwelling per 10,000 square feet. The reason for the request of the PRD is to allow for that lot to be split in half and be able to have two single-family detached units. This is very similar to an RS 6 zone district layout, and the only thing that, the exception to that would be actually the width of the lot. A RS 6 would require a 50-foot-wide lot, and you can see here, one of the lots is 47 feet, and one of them is 51 feet. So those would be the only exceptions to the underlying zone district comparison. Currently, future-
Question real quick about why you're talking about that, because I read this in the material. Is an RS 6 not a 6,000-square-foot lot?
It is a 6,000-square-foot lot.
Isn't this a 6,000-square-foot lot for two houses?
It would actually be a 7,395-square-foot lot and a 6,815-square-foot lot, so it would meet the minimum 6,000-square-foot lot.
I read it wrong.
But not the current RS 10 zone district.
Gotcha.
And then, under the land use map, it does show this as a suburban residential land use character, which generally would call out for an RS 15, RS 12, or RS 10-type zone districts with a 3.54 dwelling unit maximum. Because this is smaller lots, it is closer to 6.6 dwelling units. But even though this is not in line with our land use, staff does support this particular project because it's really infill on a vacant lot that helps to transition between the single-family neighborhood and the dental office and some of the higher-density uses. And really, it provides a good transition for those uses in a single-family product. If the applicant would like to have some initial comments on this particular project this afternoon after they're done, and you may have any other comments or anything missing that you would like us to bring to your public hearing, we would like to set that for the June 2 date as well.
I don't really have anything to say. I'm just building two houses. We're going to go with that modern, very modern on these two houses. I'll answer any questions you guys got on the structures.
And those elevations are in the pattern book.
Any questions or comments before we set a public hearing?
I move to set a public hearing, June 2nd?
2nd.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And next, we have a zoning application for approximately 0.15 acres located along East Vine Street to be rezoned from RS 8 and CCO to PRD, the Nook on Vine PRD and CCO. BNA Homes LLC applicant.
And this is my last PRD for the day. It is in a little bit different area. This is actually within our CCO overlay district with the current zoning at RS 8. As you can see from this particular map, we do have a little bit of a mix mash in and around the project. There's actually a previously approved PRD that has not moved forward at the corner of Vine and Bilbrow. We've got three, what I would call very small, single-family detached across the street that have 35-foot, 40-foot width in their lot sizes, some very modern apartment units here, but the predominant character is actually craftsman bungalow styling. The PRD is actually being proposed because the current zoning only allows for one dwelling per 8,000-square-foot lot size. This, we're looking at removing the existing house and splitting that lot into two lots, one being 3,400 square feet, one being 3,300 square feet.
That's what I was thinking about.
That's very similar to what we call-
I knew it!
That's the one you were thinking of. I was having the same problem as I was writing the reports, making sure I didn't confuse which one, so you had me going earlier. So those particular land splits are very similar to an RSA Type 1 zoning regulation as far as the minimum lot areas are generally 3,000 square feet with the setbacks with five-feet side, 20-foot rear yard, 20-foot front yard, front setbacks. So really, the only caveat for the PRD is that the floor area ratio would be higher than what an RSA Type 1 district would normally allow. It would be up to about .55 and .57 floor area ratio where normally the minimum or maximum would only be .3. All of the other setback and standards in that district are actually being met by the proposal. The future land use map on this actually calls out for a suburban residential land use character, which is generally RS 15, RS 12, and RS 10 zone districts, which would be 3.54 units to the acre. This particular project, because it is a smaller lot, goes up to about 13.5 dwelling units per acre. However, staff would still be strongly supporting this recommendation because it does meet the purposes of our CCO district, which is promoting reinvestment into downtown or Freesboro neighborhoods, creating a more compact, dense development that is close to the downtown for walkability. And the third one, which I did not write down because I didn't include in my notes, is that it's really set for redevelopment in areas where existing patterns are maybe inconsistent or unestablished. Really, those areas of the CCO that we have that are very established, all of the units are safe, those kinds of neighborhoods, we might not recommend it, but given the characteristics of these surroundings, we believe it is appropriate. So with that, the applicant is available to answer any questions prior to setting your June 2 public hearing, and if there's any additional information you'd like to see in your packet, we'd love to hear those today so we can make sure we include those. And by the way, I think they're cute as button.
Every time there's a lot come for sale down here, I've been trying to buy them. If it remotely makes a little sense, I buy it. The only way it works is to put two back there. I wanted to go very modern with these structures, but after strong urging from planning over there. So it does fit there, it's a cottage style, so my goal is to, this is in between our Vine Street project and our Bilbrow project, so I plan on trying to buy several of these in the next two years and do this type of product over.
Very nice. Any questions?
I'll make a motion. We set the planning here for June 2nd?
2nd.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's got all our public hearings scheduled. Next, we have staff reports and other business, and we have four items there to discuss today. They are all mandatory referrals. The first one is a mandatory referral to consider the transfer of property to the city and the dedication of utility easements along Case and Trail in conjunction with the Parkside at Hidden River Development. Huddleston Steel Engineering, Inc. is the applicant. Mr. Blomley?
Mr. Burns left. I don't-
He forgot. He had so many. He had so many on here.
I think he wanted to try to hit double digits in the number of items that he had on the agenda today, but, so, Mr. Burns' last item on the agenda that Mr. Huddleston is representing him on is a, it's a little bit of a complicated mandatory referral. I'll try to be brief and simple on it. And if we could bring up the laptop at the, that I'm at for the, there we go. Thank you, Cable Department. This is the property to the south of Hidden Rivers that Mr. Burns is developing as Parkside at Hidden Rivers. It's the RS 10-zoned property that he is developing with single-family detached lots, minimum 10,000 square feet. You'll recall, the condition of the Hidden River PUD approval was that, was that access for construction vehicles had to come through Shalom Street, which is the extension of Barfield Road north through the World Outreach Church property and up through the Parkside at Hidden River property. Mr. Burns is getting very close to recording the plat for Parkside at Hidden Rivers. He's been, as he committed to moving forward with the development of the single-family detached subdivision before he moved forward with Hidden River. So there are a few items that are necessary, excuse me, to, to move forward with, with respect to the Parkside at Hidden River development. First, there is a approximately 10-acre portion of his development that is in this exhibit that he is proposing to donate to the city of Murfreesboro. It's directly adjacent to the Case and Trail trailhead, and this 10 acres is intended to be used for future trailhead amenities. Exactly what those trailhead amenities are at this point has not been identified, but this is, this is land that is directly adjacent to our existing park space and can be utilized for the expansion of that, of that trailhead in the future. So that's something that we're excited about, but in conjunction with that, there are some utility easements that must be recorded on that future city property as well as on the existing city trailhead property. And so, whenever we have transactions on city property, that requires a mandatory referral. So the transactions here are the donation of the, of the land to the city as well as the dedication of utility easements, both electric and sanitary sewer easements on the city property, both the existing city property and the proposed to be donated city property. So, in a nutshell, that's what we are asking for you to recommend approval on this mandatory referral for to the city council. We have it on the city council agenda tomorrow for consideration pending the outcome of your action here today, knowing that Mr. Burns is on a time schedule to record his plat for Parkside at Hidden Rivers and that this is a component of that. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Blomley regarding this mandatory referral?
If there are none, I'll make a motion. We approve the mandatory referral.
2nd.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our next item, mandatory referral to consider donation of right-of-way and easements from city-owned property to TDOT for the Thompson Lane and State Route 99 widening projects. City of Murfreesboro is the applicant. Mr. Ives?
Thank you, Chair Jones. I've been promoted again, and I appreciate that a lot. This item is for the, both the Thompson Lane widening project and the State Route 99 widening project that is between Bridge Avenue or between, I guess, 96 and Middle Tennessee. Regarding the Thompson Lane, there are four city-owned properties that the, that TDOT requires a small amount of right-of-way or easement from. Staff has determined that these are not going to have any adverse impact on our operations. The largest actual take would be from the Segal School property, but it's just a couple of feet along the frontage of the property. There's a large front yard to the school, so it's not going to have any adverse impact. The, interesting on this State Route 99 project that originally, TDOT didn't think they needed more right-of-way, they actually had acquired some right-of-way from the Sonner family prior to the time that the city bought the lot from the Sonner family, T4R Transit Station. There's a bit of a jog in the right-of-way line, and now TDOT has decided that they want, and I think it's three feet off the front, off the Thompson Lane side, I'm sorry, off the State Route 99 side of that lot. The complexity is that the city received money from federal highways or federal transportation to buy that property, and federal transportation may want to have appraisals, and it may be more difficult to donate it, but we're, we're asking Planning Commission to go ahead and recommend the donations of all of these, and if we have to change gears on the Thompson Lane project, we will, but primarily to, still to approve the donation of all of these to TDOT so that, yeah, I get to, we, staff feels it with, as badly as the city wants both of these projects completed, it's appropriate for us to donate, particularly when it's something that's not going to impact any of our operations or usage of any of the property, so, but ask your approval for these donations.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Ives?
I'll make a motion. We approve it.
2nd.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item C is the mandatory referral to consider acquisition of property on Butler Drive for Public Works, possible solid waste transfer station and other support services. City of Murfreesboro is the applicant. Mr. Ives?
On the screen now is the site of a property that is currently owned by the King family. The staff has been in touch with them, and we believe we have an agreement to acquire that. We would like Planning Commission's approval of that, recommendation for approval to council. This- I think you have seen in the past, along with other major transportation issues that you've looked at, that Butler Drive and Elam Road would be reconfigured to move that intersection of Butler Drive further to the, I guess that's west, to have a better separation and have less conflict than currently is there with the intersection of the interstate and Joby Jackson. And then the Butler, Butler, yeah, Butler and Elam Road intersection, just a very short distance away from that, has caused some conflicts. I think there have been accidents partly because people aren't sure whether they're getting on Elam Road or Butler Drive or the interstate. And this would, the rerouting would be an improvement. So ultimately, I think Butler Drive is going to go on the backside of the site that the city is acquiring. But for now, it's accessible from the front, and staff has looked at this and thinks it's a good site to, probably first step is to be looking at a transfer station for solid waste so that we can shorten our wait times out at the, at the landfill when we dump out there. Instead of taking each trash truck, we would transfer it into a larger truck than it would take to the landfill. So we ask your approval for acquisition of this property for city usage.
Any questions?
Make a motion. We approve the mandatory referral so that the city can buy this property on Butler Drive.
Say it.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Last, we have a mandatory referral to consider the abandonment of a portion of a drainage easement along Goose Creek Lane. SEC, Inc. is the applicant. Mr. Blomley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And don't speak too soon. This actually isn't going to be the last item.
I knew it wasn't going to be last. Just knew. Just knew when I said it.
Our last listed item is-
Okay, right.
Is a mandatory referral along Goose Creek Lane. This is in one of the southern sections of the Three Rivers subdivision. This is actually kind of a, there was kind of a drafting oversight when Section 10 of Three Rivers was platted. There was a drainage easement that was platted with Section 8. And when Section 10 was then, and the drainage easement was actually off-site on the area where Section 10 was going to be platted. But when they got around to plating Section 10, they had rerouted the drainage system. But there was the drainage easement that was recorded with Section 8 that essentially served no purpose, and it was never abandoned at the time. And now they have a drainage easement that serves no purpose. Ms. Knoll has reviewed it and agrees that it's a surplus drainage easement. If you look on the exhibit before you right now, that Lot 380, there's a home builder wanting to start home construction on Lot 380 right now, and they can't do so until this drainage easement is abandoned because this drainage easement takes up a significant amount of the building envelope. So we've actually put this on here kind of at the last minute, and we've got it on the council agenda tomorrow night pending your action tonight because we don't want to hold them up any longer than we have to from being able to start the building of the house on Lot 380. So if, we'd recommend that you approve the mandatory referral, this drainage easement abandonment to the council, and the council will approve it so that the legal department can begin the quitclaim deed process to completely eliminate that drainage easement. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
If there are none, I'll make a motion that we approve the mandatory referral.
2nd.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Any other staff reports?
I believe that attached to your agenda is one more. I hope it's on your agenda because I thought I saw it, didn't get printed out. Okay. I'm going to take away Matthew's honor of being, yes, yes, that's it.
This one?
The picture on the back, right. Matthew's honor of being, last but not least, I'm going to take that away from him today.
Actually, I've got one behind you, David.
Darn. Should let you go first. Anyway, as I mentioned, we're going to be rerouting Butler Drive at some point in the future. We have been discussing with the Mali Corporation acquisition of an option to buy this little triangle that shows up on the backside of what you have before you. That is property that Mali really can't do anything with, and among other things, that will give them an access when we reroute Butler, an access that they may be able to do some additional use with the back part of their property, which currently you would not be able to get to. Anyway, we've got a, we've been working with Mali Corporation to get an option to buy that, and I believe this one is going to go to council tomorrow night also. We'd like your approval to buy that if we can and get the option that then we can, once we're ready to build the road, which may be sooner rather than later, that we would have that spot available to, as part of that new roadway. Happy to answer any questions?
And just the triangle, not the other blue line up here?
The turn lane is something that I believe Mali will be doing in connection with a, an expansion of their project, which doesn't show on this, but unfortunately, we have two blue showing, but it's the triangle in the bottom, in the corner of it.
Just what you've got circled in the bottom.
That we would acquire for the road.
Okay.
Make a motion. We approve the acquisition or whatever.
2nd.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please state aye.
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 Okay.
Come on, man.
More business.
It's a whole nother agenda.
It's very easy. It's very easy.
I want to redo the sign ordinance. I like talking about the sign ordinance.
All right. So Mr. Blomley must have another item for us.
I do. I do. And this kind of builds off of the zoning ordinance amendment that you recommended for approval. I thought I was being very, very detail-oriented when I was putting together all that whole laundry list, but then I found some more things that were impacted by the zoning ordinance amendment that we proposed, specifically in Section 7, as we differentiate between multifamily residential and single-family residential attached townhomes. And this is all just kind of semantics, but if you recall, one of the purposes of the zoning ordinance amendment was to clarify that townhomes were single-family residential attached. Multifamily residential does not include townhomes. It was kind of building off of the zoning ordinance amendment from 2017 that created the RSA zoning district. So what I have observed is that in Section 7, which deals with when site plans are required, and Section 18, which deals with our solid waste requirements, is that it was, it only included the term multifamily residential. Well, now that we're separating single-family residential townhomes out of multifamily residential, we don't want to exempt townhome developments from our site plan review process just because we're changing the nomenclature. So what I did, and you can see where I've highlighted in red, and I apologize for the horrible formatting, this was kind of a last-minute thing, that anywhere where it says multifamily residential in those sections, I've added single-family residential attached townhomes. So that just because we are modifying the definitions, we're still keeping those same regulations for townhomes that have been in place for ages and ages and ages. And then also, I noticed in Chart 2 that there were some inconsistencies with regards to how we treat single-family attached zero-lot line and single-family detached zero-lot line in certain zoning districts with regards to floor area ratio, livability space ratio, and open space ratio. So as you see in art, for example, the RSA zoning district, I've put none, none, and none for those three categories, where we had percentages before, where it really is kind of impractical to implement those kinds of percentages for what essentially amounts to single-family residential lots. That's just, that adds a whole other element of review and something that we're not currently doing when we get single-family residential permits in. So there's that, and there are a couple other locations in Chart 2. I ran this by our legal department, and Mr. Ives agrees that these are changes that were in the spirit of the ordinance, even though they weren't a part of what was brought before you with the public hearing. And so what we would do, we would ask for your blessing regarding these additional changes so that when we bring them to council, and we've got on tomorrow night's council agenda scheduling of the public hearing for the zoning ordinance amendment, that will include these changes in what goes to council. So, and hopefully, I won't find any more between now and the council public hearing. So we would just ask for you, for your vote in blessing these additional changes.
I'll make a motion. We bless it.
That's what I was going to say. I'll second the blessing.
You have to say amen.
Amen to the blessing.
All right. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please state aye. Any opposed? Do we have any additional staff reports or other business today?
Do we have a sermon?
I have to ask Mr. Halliburton.
Ives is already up and out of here, so we stand adjourned.